Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Speaking times will be determined by the total number of public comment cards and callers in the queue at the start of each public comment period. For one to twenty total speakers, each speaker will receive up to three minutes. For twenty-one to thirty-nine total speakers, each speaker will receive up to two minutes. And for forty-plus total speakers, each speaker will receive up to one minute. No additional comment cards or calls will be accepted once the public comment period begins.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to a joint meeting of the Burbank City Council, the Housing Authority, and the Parking Authority on Tuesday, November 26, 2024. As some of you may have noticed, I am not Nick Schultz. And Mayor Nick Schultz has resigned effective at noon yesterday as he has been elected to the California State Assembly representing the 44th District. We wish him much success and congratulations and expect to see him again at our reorganization meeting on December 16th. But for tonight, and until then, you're stuck with me. And as Vice Mayor, I will act as the presiding officer for tonight's meeting. Now, if you could all please join me for a moment of reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting with a positive and collective support for our beloved community. The City Council welcomes everyone joining us this evening. We encourage you to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work we will be doing tonight. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we are united in our passion for our wonderful city. As we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what they mean to those around us. Let us find Solis in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. Now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Good evening, Madam City Clerk.
Good evening, Vice Mayor.
Please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Anthony.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mullins.
Here.
Councilmember Tagahashi.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Perez.
Here.
Thank you.
Alrighty. There will be four periods of public comment tonight. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period and must submit cards or call before the general public comment period begins. The first public comment period is for general public comment on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item. If you are here in person and wish to speak during the general public comment, you should have submitted a yellow public comment card to address the council. If you would like to participate in the general public comment over the phone, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until the general public comment period begins, at which time no additional calls will be taken. If you would like to participate in public comment for the public hearing over the phone, please call anytime between now and the beginning of the public hearing at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until the public comment period begins, at which time no additional calls will be taken. Additional public comment periods will be available following the reports to council this evening. Interpreters are also available for assistance with public comment. We have two lovely interpreters right here in the front if anybody needs their assistance. We have Spanish and Armenian interpreters, and please connect with them if you are in need of services. If we haven't received any need for services, we will send them home by the beginning of the public comment period, the hearing. So please let them know now if you need interpretation services, and we're really grateful to have them. And if you can guess how many times I said "public comment" in that period, then you win a cookie. Alright, we have five announcements this evening.
The following are announcements for November 26, 2024. Our Burbank invites residents and businesses to enter the 2024 Outdoor Holiday Decorating Contest. The entry period will close on Friday, December 6, or once fifty entries are received, whichever comes first. Winners and all other entrants will be revealed on Friday, December 20, giving everyone in the community a chance to visit the decorated homes and businesses. Winning categories include Best Overall House, Second Place Residential, Third Place Residential, Best Youth Entry, and Best Business Entry. To enter the contest or to learn more, visit burbankca.gov/OurBurbank. The Burbank Fire Department has joined with ABC Seven and other Southern California fire departments to sponsor the 32nd Annual Spark of Love Toy Drive. Donations will be accepted starting November 29 through December 24. For further information, please contact the Burbank Fire Department at 818-238-3473 or visit abc7.com/sparkoflove. Join us at Burbank City Hall on Saturday, December 7 for the mayor's tree lighting ceremony. Soak in the festivities as we illuminate the tree in front of City Hall with hundreds of twinkling lights. The event starts at 6:00 PM with live performances and holiday music. For more information, visit the city's website or call 818-238-5397. On Saturday, December 7, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, the Burbank Police Department will host an anonymous gun buyback drive-through event for City of Burbank residents in the rear lot of the police fire headquarters. Participants can receive gift cards valued between $100 to $200 based on the type of gun being disposed. Please visit burbankpd.org for a full list of requirements and safety restrictions. Join Santa and Mrs. Claus at the annual Breakfast with Santa event on Saturday, December 14, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM at the Burbank Town Center. Purchase your tickets now at burbankparks.com or contact the Overham Community Center at 818-238-5435 for additional event details. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
Alrighty. We have one council presentation this evening, and our presentation is a proclamation declaring November 25 through December 10, 2024, 16 Days of Activism Against Gender-Based Violence and International Human Rights Days in the City of Burbank. The city recognized this important initiative by lighting City Hall and the Burbank Water and Power Headquarters in orange beginning yesterday and going through December 6. If you go outside right now or anytime this evening, you will see our City Hall lit in orange. And now, I welcome the amazing Ms. Gloria Solis, Lieutenant Governor of Zonta International, District 9, to please join me. And if you are a Zontian, please come on down. I know we have a few council members who are. Gloria, would you like to say a few words?
Most of you have seen us here quite a bit for different activities and different proclamations, but the 16 Days of Activism, which actually started yesterday, which is the International Day for the Elimination of Gender-Based Violence, and it ends on December 10, Human Rights Day. Zonta Burbank, which was chartered in 1936, has been involved in this since 2012. And throughout the 16 days, not only Zonta, but other organizations throughout the world work hard to call for the elimination of violence against women. We try to raise awareness about gender-based violence as a human rights issue at the local, national, and international levels. And our campaign has been successful because of the efforts of millions of women and men worldwide who are committed to ending gender-based violence. And as you've all been reading in the newspaper and hearing on the news, the conflicts throughout the world most of the time affect women and girls disproportionately. The City of Burbank, as Vice Mayor Nikki said, is also showing its solidarity with Zonta by turning the exterior lights of City Hall and BWP orange. And the color orange actually represents an optimistic symbol for a future without violence for women and girls worldwide. We invite the community of Burbank to join the Zonta Club on December 7, coincidentally on Gun Buyback Day, when we will be holding our fourth annual March Against Gender Violence, which starts at the steps of the Burbank Police Department and ends at the City Hall. So that's Saturday, December 7, at nine o'clock in the morning. So we invite you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. And yes, you know, as a fellow Zontian, I strongly feel the cause, but I mean, it is no coincidence that not too long ago, the UN report that just came out horrifically outlining how women face more and more domestic violence every day is leading us to do something and make an impact. So the City of Burbank is proud to be a part of it. And now, I'd like to present you with this proclamation. So, this proclamation here. With 16 Days of Activism Against Gender-Based Violence and International Human Rights Days, whereas the 16 Days of Activism Against Gender Violence, beginning on November 25, the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women, and ending December 10 on International Human Rights Day, is a global call for action to end gender-based violence against women as it still continues to be the most pervasive human rights violation and global epidemic affecting millions of women and girls of all races and socioeconomic backgrounds in our local communities and worldwide. And whereas the Zonta Club of Burbank area, chartered in 1936, joins over 1,100 members in 64 countries as part of Zonta International, which has been working for gender equity for 105 years by empowering women through service and advocacy. Now, therefore I, Nikki Perez, Vice Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim November 25 through December 10 as 16 Days of Activism Against Gender-Based Violence and International Human Rights Days in the City of Burbank. And along with the Zonta Club of Burbank area, encourage all residents to work to end gender-based violence.
One question for the audience. How many of you know that the state of California has not yet passed a law that sets the age for marriage at 18? Two, three, four, five? Because now, if you are 11, 12, or 13 years old, you can be married off by a parent or a judge. Yes, I know, and California prides itself on its progressiveness, so I now ask all of you to write to your newly-elected Assemblyman, Nicholas Schultz, and ask him to work toward ending child marriage in the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. You have your call to action from Zonta. Thank you, everybody.
He thought he was off the hook because he wasn't at the meeting, but no.
Alright, Mr. City Manager, anything to report?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I do not have anything to report tonight.
Thank you for making that quick and easy for us. Mr. City Attorney, will you please report on closed session?
My name is Madam Vice Mayor. Members of the City Council, for the benefit of the public, the City Council met in closed session this afternoon at 4:00 PM to discuss one matter of existing litigation in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 concerning the case of Cazares versus City of Burbank, a personal injury matter. The City Council took no reportable action this evening.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Now is the time for general public comment. I'll be calling out the speaker's name, as well as the person who is next in line to speak, in order to keep public comment moving in a timely fashion. We have a designated seat in the front row for speakers who are next up to the podium. A timer is available on the podium. This is also the last call for anyone who needs an interpreter, although staff will be released for the evening. Persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agenda's report, but will not be able to speak on that item following this segment. Do you all have any requests, the interpreters? For... Alright, then, I believe you are free to go home. Thank you for joining us this evening. Alrighty. The general public comment period is now beginning, and after this card, no additional cards will be, or calls will be accepted. Madam City Clerk, how many cards do we have this evening?
Just getting the last couple in. We have, we have eight, 19 cards, four callers, so we're at 23 and counting. I just have the last two that just got handed in. So, it's a two-minute...
So, in line with our City Council guideline, 23 falls in between the 21 to 39 speakers, which means each speaker will have two minutes each to share their public comment. I will begin with the speakers. As soon as everybody's ready to go, I will state your name. When you hear your name, I'll state whoever's next, and you can come on up. Please, I will ask now if you agree, disagree, if you can find a way to share that. I know our previous mayor asked for jazz hands. Any way to share that quietly, just so that the next person in line can hear their name. I would really appreciate it. Alrighty. Our first speaker is David Donahue, followed by Paul Derigo. Mr. Donahue, you will have two minutes. And if I mispronounce anybody's name at any point, feel free to correct me for the record, and your time will begin after that. Mr. Donahue, whenever you're ready.
Councilmembers, Staff, David Donahue, one of the things I wanted to kind of comment on was brought to my attention earlier today, that there is going to be a City of Los Angeles Forest Lawn Drive Safety and Mobility Project. Now, this is going to be, there's going to be an orientation held on Wednesday, December 4, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Junior Achievement of Social Center 6250 Forest Lawn Drive. The question that I would ask, and if you all are not aware of this, is taking the forest lawn, which is four lanes, down to two lanes to allow for dedicated bike lanes on either side. So this is going to then, as I see it, highly impact the Rancho, because it's going to then divert traffic from forest lawn, probably along Riverside Drive. And I'm wondering, as I know that our wonderful staff does really good work on analyzing traffic patterns, because this is just, you know, right next to Los Angeles, is that has the City of Burbank looked at or worked with Los Angeles to see what sort of pressures are going to be put on Riverside Drive? What kind of pressures and impact will affect the residents of the Rancho? And with additional traffic and hundreds or thousands of cars going into our city, could we, and I would ask respectfully, would you please look at that? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Paul Derigo. Alright, folks, if we could, if we could please keep it down so folks can hear their names. We'll go a lot faster, I swear.
I heard it.
Paul Derigo, followed by Jim Fletcher.
Hi, good evening. My name is Paul Derigo, and I'm here to talk about an issue that's important to me. US, the US, by the way, leads the world in child trafficking. I'm blown away by that, by the way. My friend Constantine and the DSA are preaching to young adults that capitalism is evil and that they need to fight it. I'm concerned about these kind of issues. I mean, he has a right to say that, and I do agree with the high cost of living. It is insufferable. There are bad people doing bad things, but it's not the system. It's bigger than you and I. It's the state and the cost of government. It's the taxation, it's the federal policies, it's the levies on business. So to my DSA friends, and, you know, you're being offered poverty and suffering masked by a mission. What I'm asking you to consider, and to consider the other side, and that is to make more money. What would life look like if you made a specific amount more? I mean, pick that amount, it could be whatever. But Burbank offers entrepreneurial classes, free. I mean, Constantine, you'd like that, right? It's free. So, join me there. Let's do something there. Let's make more money. Let's do things you can pay, you can give. You heard all the requests for money, right? How about being able to contribute to those things by creating something? Socialism offers suffering and poverty. Entrepreneurship creates. That's what pays our taxes. That's what gives people the opportunity to contribute to others. So it concerns me, and again, they have a right to do that in this country, and, you know, that's fine. But I also want the opportunity to say, let's consider the other side. And where is the evidence for that? So that's what I'd like to offer, and meet me at the entrepreneurial class. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Jim Fletcher, followed by Lauren Ewing.
Hey there, councilmembers. I'm here to announce myself for applying for one of the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission positions that's going to be open. I'm a resident of Burbank. I've been working at Warner Brothers for just over 20 years, in New York and here. I'd really like to continue to help Burbank be a thriving arts community that it is. I mean, you know, I was involved heavily with two of the statue installations with DC Comics and Warner Brothers. That's been great. I mean, visiting the, all the electrical boxes have been fun, taking a lot of pictures of those. Elephant Parade, my only complaint was they weren't big enough to sit on, but, you know, they look great. And the murals all around town are fantastic, and I really think art can help drive commerce and tourism, and I'd really like to be involved in that more than I had been already. My job at Warner Brothers has prepared me for managing thousands of projects over the years, under budget, leading teams, being with teams. So I understand the financial ramifications of all these things, and schedules in the toy development world are pretty crazy, so I feel like I could, you know, I'd like to lend my hand and help you guys out with it. Thanks for consideration.
Thank you for your comment, and thank you for applying. Our next speaker is Lauren Ewing, followed by Erica Reese.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time, respect, and attention, and I'll try to cut this down due to the two-minute timeline. My public comment is regarding the 910 South Mariposa project. I'm vehemently opposed to this. SB 35 is what caused this to, I believe, get pushed along, and it will harm our communities like the Rancho by forcing high-density housing developments that lead to traffic congestion and overwhelming resources as seen in cities like Los Angeles and Palo Alto. These projects have caused overcrowding and a loss of community spaces, an understanding concern to many Rancho residents. My concern is that Burbank will become like the following case studies. Los Angeles, Westwood and Koreatown, projects like the Century Westwood Apartments built in 2019, and the Koreatown Plaza Apartments 28 through 2019 worsen congestion. San Francisco, the south of Market Apartments, SOMA, developed at 1225 Harrison Street in 2019, and 1990 Flotsam Street in 2018 led to increased congestion in already-dense areas. Santa Monica, the 1256 Street in 2019, and Gateway Project in 2018 contributed to worsening trafficking on Wilshire Boulevard. And finally, Palo Alto developments from 500 to 600 El Camino Real in 2018, and the Palo Alto Village in 2018 added congestion to El Camino Real. Again, these are case studies, it's not just my thoughts and feelings. These are developers' consequences of the downstream effects. We can see traffic developments and hindrances. SB 35, which accelerates high-density housing development, could be disastrous for small equestrian communities like the Rancho by overwhelming local infrastructure. As seen in cities like Los Angeles and the ones that were aforementioned, rapid development without adequate infrastructure leads to severe traffic congestions, longer commute times, and strained public services. Burbank is even smaller than the cities I referenced. What more? The Rancho relies on open spaces, a peaceful environment, and recreational land. Once it's gone, it's gone. We already must brace for increased traffic thanks to the Pickwick Lanes, again, a project many of us opposed. I stand opposed to this one as well, as SB 35 solely focuses on housing, completely overlooking the quality of life and long-term consequences.
Thank you for your comment. My next speaker is Erica Rice, followed by Vivian Neal. Thank you, Mr. Donahue, for the jazz hands. Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Erica Reese. Exactly what she said, I'll start there. I have been a resident of the Rancho community for 18 years. I've been an equestrian for over 50, and I've been utilizing the bridge, the equestrian and pedestrian bridge, the swinging bridge at the end of Mariposa for 46 years. We've dealt enough with trying to get the cyclists to abide by the laws because of what happens when you mix horses and bicycles. So I can only imagine the flow of traffic, construction, the danger that it's going to pose hundreds and hundreds of people. I'm an experienced equestrian. I know how to handle an animal. That is the only way for us to get on the trails. So if there's construction, let, 100 feet, less than 100 feet away from the only thoroughfare that we have coming and going, never mind children inexperienced, people that, the joy that they get from being on a horse, it's terrifying. The thought of it is just terrifying. Never mind the fact that the street itself is almost too narrow for two trucks to pass by. So I just, I can't even imagine what life is going to be like for the residents that frequent the trails, that have to ride from their residences on the streets to get through with the traffic because of what this really horrifying housing project could bring to our neighborhood. And I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Vivian Neal, followed by Kyle Bone. Well, if you didn't hear your name, this is the consequence of the clapping, but Vivian Neal, followed by Kyle Bone. You have two minutes.
Um, hi. I've been, I've lived in the Rancho for all my life. I've walked my dogs every day around the neighborhood. One day, I saw a flag that said Butterfly Gardens. I got excited because I thought there might be a butterfly sanctuary that they're building. I asked my parents. They said that it's five stories, they're building five stories of condos. Which made me worry about how the horses and the people would be. They had, they, since Pickwick, there's already been more cars than usual. Now that they're, they're building this, five stories of people would make way too many cars, especially for a little street. There's a blind corner that scares me sometimes, even though there's not many cars. And if that, five stories, that's too many people. And even if it doesn't hurt... And even if it doesn't hurt a, a horse, if a car doesn't hurt a horse physically, it could scare the horse, and the horse could, the horse could hurt someone near it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Kyle Bone, followed by Ivan Uziel.
Hi, council members and staff. My name is Kyle Bone. I am here to, I submitted for the Cultural Arts Commission. I've been a resident of Burbank for the last seven or eight years. I've worked in Burbank for longer than that. I'm a writer, when I can find somebody to pay me to do it. I've worked in television, film, digital, all that stuff. And, you know, my biggest concern with this is that it feels like Southern California with the changes in the entertainment industry is at risk of losing an entire generation of creatives. And so, you know, I wanted to, you know, I've had some success, not a ton, not as much as I'd like, but, you know, I do what I can. And I'd like to, to give back and to try to help Burbank sort of appeal to that new generation, find new ways to bring people in, find new ways to help people make a living creating their art and, you know, using Burbank to do it. And that's really all I have, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Ivan Uziel, followed by Mark Scroggs. Ivan Uziel. He's not speaking. Alrighty, our next speaker is Mark Scroggs, followed by Liz Radley.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. First, I'm going to go off topic, I'll talk about entertainment in a second, but first, last Friday, when, during the Magnolia Fair, we drove around for about 45 minutes trying to find parking. Now, my wife did say, we should take an Uber. I said, that's a silly idea. Anyway, so, but it was just driving around and driving around, and then, even though it was really slow, people were pulling in and out, like, like I told her, I said, like, they're driving in Glendale, not Burbank, they're not paying attention. We were, I was in Glendale this morning, trust me. So I was wondering, I don't know if they can do this, like, with the Starlight Bowl and other things you have shuttle services, there's school parking lots and that stuff, some people could go to, that would help with some of these events, because there is a long walk, and it was just, it was crowded, so just want to mention that. On the animation side, I just want to focus on, on entertainment with animation. The Animation Guild did work, work a tentative deal out. Now, a lot of the jobs are gone, there's AI, there's people working from home, you know, like they were saying in one meeting, a lot of the Disney stuff's been, being done by individuals in Paris, not in Burbank and Glendale. So it's going to be a hard climb, but it's the one area that's the most devastated of all, and we do have, I think Netflix Animation is still here, you know, you got the Warner stuff, you got Disney and Nickelodeon and all that. You know, Nickelodeon's pretty much a shell of itself now. So, and I know viewing habits have changed, I know that costs have changed and AI, but it's something that we really, one of the first things we need to focus on, like, in the early part of the year, is like trying to rebuild it, because a lot of these animation people are all moving out, so. So just want to mention that, say happy Thanksgiving again.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Liz Radley, followed by Paula Rhodes. Welcome, Liz, you have two minutes.
Okay, I'll, I'll just vamp. Good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about the LA River, specifically about the low fence, and I know you all know about this because I've talked to you all in the last 24 hours. The Burbank boundaries actually go all the way down across the river, across the rough land on the other side and underneath the, underneath the tunnel of the 134. Navigate LA, by the way, Army Corps has been incredibly responsive to this, they've sent me so much information today, I wasn't able to print it out in time to bring you. But this shows, in this triangle here, a little piece of vacated property that says, V A C R E S 1702 Burbank, which I believe means it's property of Burbank, but all to be confirmed in the future with more information as I have it. The two-foot-high fence is within that triangle. And I knew he'd want to be represented here tonight, so here's former mayor and future Assembly Member Nick Schultz standing by the two-foot-high fence. Here is a horse standing by the two-foot-high fence, you can see how very easy it is to simply fall off the horse and into the river. Here is from what I believe is Burbank into someone who fell not from a horse, but who fell on August 21st, 2016 into the river and had to be rescued by crane. Here's someone who fell down by LAIC off a horse into the river and had to be rescued by crane. And here's the difference in height between, even at the full height, the Army Corps fence and a person. The significance is that in my conversations with Army Corps and my meeting with an Army Corps representative is that in order to make the fence higher, they would have to drill further into the concrete, which could impact the integrity. So the proposal is to put a fence inside.
Thank you, Liz, that's your time. Thank you. Our next speaker is Paula Rhodes, followed by Nancy Bernard.
Oh, good, someone my size. Hello, council members, Paula Rhodes, and fellow residents. Just here to introduce myself, as, as recommended, for tossing my hat in the ring for the Cultural Arts Commission, should my services be needed. No ego, though, it sounds like we have some wonderful applicants, so I'll be cheering them on if my services are not the best fit, but I'm an actor-director-producer-and-mom and resident, whose skills span everything from live production to recorded graphic design and problem-solving and wrangling cats that momdom and producing often covers. So if those fit, happy to be considered and thankful to have a city that I love so much. So, thank you all.
Thank you for your comment and your application. Our next speaker is Nancy Bednar, followed by Helen Quail.
Hi, Nancy Bednar. Good evening. I am a resident of, on 400 South Fairview Street, and I'm here to talk about the new Burbank launches online residential parking permit portal. So first of all, I'm having a hard time with the announcement of a new launch of an online parking permit portal, when in order to obtain, for example, a one-day visitor pass, you would have to go onto the site, onto the portal, log the visitor's information, model, make, license plate, then you have to travel down to City Parking Department and pay in person for your $1 for that visitor coming to your house. How often do we just get a drop-by visitor that you don't even know someone's coming? So my question overall to the council here is, what is the city of Burbank objectives of a residential permitted parking area? There's multiple zones, so I'm in residential A, for example, you can only park Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, but what about Thanksgiving tomorrow? Are we going to get ticketed? My neighbor is having a whole house full of guests. How is that possible to know, to, it's kind of insulting also, to ask your visitors to give you all this information? And then, I understand for, the old, even the old system, you could go online, put the information in, pay your dollar via Visa, and then print out a visitor's pass. So my overall question is, you know, what, what are the objectives here? Have we asked the homeowners what they would like to see and what needs to be considered? Yes, it's been a concern for residents to have access to the street parking in front or near their homes. However, the needs of the homeowners need to be considered. Can the residents within a zone be queried as to what their needs are? So, just a little sampling, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. Our next speaker is Helen Quail, followed by James Ingram.
Hi, first, my name is Helen Quail, and I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity to speak. I've lived in Burbank my entire life. I have taught in the Burbank schools for over 40 years at all the different levels, so I'm well aware of the city. I am also the owner of a 26-foot motorhome, which unfortunately I have to park or store off-site. In October, when I took it out, I paid $6 for a three-day block of parking permits. I was very shocked to find out in November that now I had to pay $6 for one permit, for one day, and then I had to get another permit, and another permit, and another permit. I am very conscious of why the city has this parking permit program. All you have to do is drive outside of the city of Burbank and see why we have a permit for parking an RV on our streets. I understand that. What I don't understand is why there's a 200% increase, just for me to park my RV outside my house so that I can prepare for a trip. So I need to wash it, I need to maintain it, I need to get the refrigerator cold, I need to do all of this within a very, very short period of time. So I would like the board to reconsider. Why do we go a 200% increase? Why can I not park it for three days? Why can I only park it there for one day and then have to reapply for another permit? So I'd like the city to reconsider this, go back to their old permit, even, even raise the raise. If you need the money that badly, raise it to $7. You went from 5 to 6, that was reasonable. I don't think a 200% is a reasonable price increase for the city of Burbank. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is James Ingram, followed by Matthew Arat.
Hello, city council members and staff. I just wanted to say, my name is James Ingram. I wanted to thank the city and all of our first responders for another really great holiday in the park and wine walk event. I think that those two events really showcase the power of, like, what friendly, walkable spaces can do in Burbank. But I wanted to comment, in this general period, do talk about bridges. So I was walking over, I live less than a mile from here, and I try to walk as much as possible, and I was, I came over the Magnolia Ave Bridge, and I realized, I'd seen some discourse in other areas, but I realized just how unsafe the bridges actually are for anybody other than vehicles driving, especially when I was coming down on the east side of the bridge and a bicyclist came up. And I'm not, I wasn't particularly worried, but I kind of had this notion that if there was an incident, and, granted, I'm fairly tall, but the, the railing of the bridge is like knee height for me, and just my center of gravity is such that a moderate interaction, and I, and I'm over the bridge, and, you know, on the, on the freeway below. And I know that there were some concerns with the BRT project coming up, and how they want to do a line, a station on the bridge, and then apparently there's some seismic issues, some, maybe some retrofitting issues as well, forgive me if I don't have all the specifics, but I think it's a really great infrastructure project for Burbank to look at in the future, considering it's a, it's a current safety hazard, and if there are, like, seismic concerns, I mean, that's a big problem for not just drivers on, you know, the, the city streets, but on the freeway below. So I just wanted to comment on that, and thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Matthew Arat, followed by Amy DeLisandro Stoltz.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for welcoming me here, and I'd like to thank my movie group for helping me out with this. I am applying for a position for the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission. For about four years, ever since the pandemic started, I've been involved in a movie club that is met every single Monday for the past four years. Attendance is incredible. At my very young age, I am a senior at Cal State University Northridge with a business degree in management, I'm an undergrad right now. I have been involved, surprisingly, with a number of nonprofits that have improved my understanding of the impact that arts have had on our younger generation. I'll share one story. I was involved with an organization called Musicians at Play, where we went to a school district in some, in one area of Los Angeles, and I gave instruments to kids and felt like Santa Claus. And from that day onward, I felt that I needed to replicate this experience as far as I could possibly go in every facet that I possibly could, and I feel that the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission is part of the reason why I continue to do the things that I do. My focus is to better people of the younger generation and their lives through the power of art, and I'm currently involved with the Fostering Dreams Project to be involved with that kind of experience. Part of my expertise was understanding the arts through John Wolkman. He mentored me for about two years through documentary, and he was a USC professor at the time. And I feel that my expertise in the younger generation will really improve what the Burbank, what the city of Burbank has to offer. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comment, and thank you for your application. My next speaker is Amy DeLisandro Stoltz, followed by Thomas Awesome.
Hello, council. My name is Amy DeLisandro Stoltz. I am a resident of Burbank. I am an equestrian, a mother, a rider of these trails. I live in the neighborhood, and I want to thank the young lady who had the courage to come up here and speak about her fears of being a young girl walking in the streets and walking her dog. I know her and her father. We all walk these streets together. We ride, we walk, we ride our bikes, we walk our children. Being an equestrian for over 30 years, I have no fear riding down these streets, but when I heard about the 42 condos that were going up on Mariposa that is already narrow, I see Pickwick and I see the construction that's happening there, and all of the trucks, cement, water, and I'm looking at this small 910 South Mariposa and thinking, how are they going to get all of these vendors in this small property, and how that's going to affect the safety of our neighborhood? Yes, the bridge, hundreds of people go on and off that bridge, some more experienced than others, and when I think about the safety of our children, of our horses, and I think about the traffic that's going to be up and down those streets, it just, I could cry. I mean, the blind corner, just as it is now, I couldn't imagine what it's going to be like to compete with the traffic that's going to become, because you think about two people per house, that's 80-plus, could be 100 cars that will come out of the development of that property, and most of them will not be equestrians. And my, me and my horse going down Rees were hit by a car, by a woman driving her daughter to school, and she's, the first thing she said was, as my horse is standing on three legs, is, oh, we know the Rancho. And if that's going to be the attitude of every single person that's going to be driving, newly moving to our community, I could only imagine, none of them are going to be horse people and know
Thank you for your time.
About our safety. So I just hope that you take that into consideration and please help us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My next speaker is Thomas Awesome, followed by Sheila Harmer.
Hello, council. Thank you for letting me be with you. Thank you to everyone fighting for animal safety and all the other applicants. I'm here for the Burbank Arts Council, myself. I am currently a designer at Warner Brother as well. Gotten to take a very unconventional path, I've been a resident here of Burbank in the literal shadow of the studios. For the last 10 years, it's been an exciting path for me to go from an independent artist to where I am in my creative career. I truly didn't know that it was even a possibility when I started, just turned a trauma draw my way out of a chaotic childhood. So it means a lot to me, but in that time, you know, I've got to be a lot of different roles, but the one that I've gotten to develop and that means the most to me is that of uncle. And I'm, I'm lucky to have a niece and a nephew really close to me, and now it's sort of gone full circle, where I have them, like, drawing pictures and dropping them off at my doors, and I'm literally drawing, like, for Beetlejuice projects, and then they're drawing pictures of Beetlejuice and giving it to me. And it's honestly been, like, the most meaningful experience that I've gotten to experience, to have, like, while I've been here in Burbank, and I want to continue using the opportunity that I have and where I've gotten to go in my career to continue giving and taking my part in the community as well around here. There's so much beautiful projects. Thank you for the constant influence that it's all around, and I'd love to learn more and be a student of what the Arts Council does and lend some of my opportunity and expertise as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your application, and you have a pretty awesome last name. I know, that was a bad joke, thank you. My next speaker is Sheila Harmer. My next speaker is Sheila Harmer, followed by Emily and Vivian Chung.
I'm upset about the portal for the car, for the cars and their, and their, what can I say, their limit, their cost of this new system that I don't think is going to be much of a benefit to a lot of Burbank. When you, I tried to get ahold of the gentleman that I heard speak last week who explained about, "Oh, well, we just haven't explained it right. We didn't make it pretty enough. We didn't make it sound fun enough." I think no matter how you present it, it sucks. So- So, the other thing they left out, there are not enough variables in this system, and it's very, very inconvenient. I did home nursing for years and years, and to have to get a permit to go see somebody who's dying is a real pain. It really is. And you've got sick people and older people. We've got our share of a gray generation in Burbank, and they need visitors, they need friends, they need help, and it may not only come from the same company. There may be six different cars coming to visit, and each one is supposed to apply for something? I'm sorry, they're going to have to really pretty it up before I think it's worth mine. It sounds like just a genuine pain. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. My next speaker is Emily with Vivian Chung.
First, I want to tell you guys how lucky we are to have an equestrian neighborhood. It is not something we should take for granted, and we should really not lose this rich history. My concern is really the safety and wellbeings, well-being of the humans and the critters. And as a city council, I wonder who you're responsible for? The developers, the few affordable housing units that were going to be created, the people and animals that walk, ride your trails, the streets? Will you be, will you take responsibility for the choice you make and the inevitable consequences? Should my child who rides be going past the construction of the, while it's in development, or the blind corner afterwards with all the cars, and something happened to her on her horse? What will you say to me? How will you make it better? How will you handle it when there are likely yet preventable accidents happen? How will you help prevent the pain of parents and friends and family of the equestrian community when accidents happen as a result of this development? I urge you to really consider, who is this for, and who will it harm, and who will it benefit? Because our children, we want them to keep this rich history. We want the equestrian community to stay, and it can't stay if you keep taking our safety away.
Thank you for your comment. All right. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers on the line?
Me too.
Great, let's send in the first caller.
The first caller is Marjani Elgenetti.
Mr. Elgenetti, you're on with city council.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Marjani Elgenetti, and I am an advocate for the Cultural Arts Commission. I'm also a resident of Burbank and passed on to music teacher for the past eight years in California public schools. I'm so excited to learn about the opportunity to serve the city on the Cultural Arts Commission. My dream is to advocate for diverse artistic expressions on a grand scale, fostering creative collaboration, promoting accessibility to the arts. I truly aim to strengthen Burbank's cultural identity and enhance the quality of life for its residents while also preserving the richness of creativity that the hub of Burbank has to offer. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment.
The next caller is Nathan Adair.
Hi, Nathan, you're on with city council.
Hi, my name is Nathan. I'm a renter in Burbank. As a renter who is actively looking to purchase a three-bedroom condo or townhome, the Mariposa Street project caught my eye. Not only that, but I had read through the staff report, and it looked like the developer has adhered to all of the objective standards that the city has put in place for that lot. So I really see no reason that the city should do anything other than approve this project. Oh, and you don't need to worry about me creating graphics because I bike everywhere. Thank you for listening to me, and please have a great day.
Thank you for your call.
The next caller is Bryant Galindo.
Bryant, you're on with the city council. You have two minutes.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time. My name is Bryant Galindo, and I am applying for the position on the Cultural Arts Commission. You know, hearing from everyone, I would say I have a very unique background. I worked primarily as a mediator, executive coach, as well as a foster. My book called The New Middle: Connecting Heart and Mind to Collaboratively Disagree. And I would bring a lot of difference to the, to the commission. I have been in Burbank for five years. I'm a native Anselino, born in the valley. I'm a first-generation Mexican-American, I speak Spanish fluently. And at least when I was looking at the current makeup of the commissioners, no one really looked like me, and I was wondering why that was. The Latino population in Burbank is thriving, it's big, and I feel like there's also opportunities to be able to bring them into the fold, and I would love to kind of be a part of that. Other than that, I think it's just an opportunity to serve, and, you know, in my work, I've worked with a lot of nonprofits, artists, creatives, helping them negotiate different deals, as well as resolve disagreements. And I've realized that when it comes to trying to create, you know, and be and do something different, you just need different opinions in the room. So I hope to be a part of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your call and your application.
The next caller is Josie Day.
Hi, Josie, you're on with city council. You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you. Hi, Vice Mayor Perez, council. I am going to try to speak quickly. I had planned three minutes. I'm calling today in November for National Family Caregivers Month to speak as the primary caregiver for my sister, who I'm lucky enough to live next to. In April, my sister suffered a TIA and was subsequently diagnosed with a benign brain tumor. I'm speaking for the family caregivers who do their best at the end of the day, are exhausted, worn out, and have to show up the next day and repeat. There is no way, however you choose to look at any situation, that my sister, pre or post-op, could have figured out how to go online and register guests, nor would I have had the capacity to do this over the past five months. We had our first visit from Whole Health one day after my sister got home from the hospital, and it was a crisis on a Friday night. I used to call the company, convince them to find someone to come in that night while my sister was screaming that her sutures were ripped open, she was dying of a brain bleed, and this was the end. As we continued her recovery, during, she had seven nurses. Before we found a permanent PT and OT, she had three physical therapists and two occupational therapists. I can't even imagine having to ask home care workers for their personal information and that they might get a $50 ticket if I forget. I know that there are stipulations for caregivers or home health workers. I understand that they're saying they have someone waiting to help to enter the number, but as the woman said earlier, she tried to reach him, she couldn't get a touch with him. I think we can probably guarantee there won't be someone available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The system will be impossible for the disabled, the recovering, and the, I'm assuming, difficult for the elderly. As a full-time caregiver, a full-time worker, I'm slightly insulted that so little is thought of caregivers' time. Not all technology needs to be implemented, not all systems need to be changed, and I don't really know why they want to change the system from making practice digital, and quite frankly, I don't care. I really urge you all to please, please, please do not pass then. Thank you.
Thank you for your call.
That was our last caller.
Alrighty, thank you, Madam City Clerk. There being no further public comment, I now declare the general public comment period closed. Now is the time for a brief response from city council, the city manager, and/or the city attorney. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a few things. First of all, the LA City project that Mr. Donahue referred to, we're going to have a transport, I'm not sure yet, we're going to follow up with transportation staff, and we'll report back to make sure that they are working with this Los Angeles to see how we can mitigate any, any issues in Burbank related to that, but we'll, we'll, we'll send you a report related to that. I'd like to ask our Community Development Director, Patrick Prescott, to come up and talk a little bit about some of the residential parking permit issues.
Mr. Prescott, welcome.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Perez, members of the city council, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Director. I would like to first address the comment regarding the height of the fence along the channelized portion of the LA River. The last council meeting when that came up, I dug up a year-old email to the Army Corps of Engineers I'd sent and resent it and asked for an update on that. They said they would talk to the project manager working at the Polywog space about a higher fence there. I haven't heard back from them, so I'll probably wait another week after Thanksgiving and follow up with them again. Sorry, Mr. City Manager, I didn't mention this before, but our transportation planning staff met today with the city of LA and Caltrans regarding the Forest Lawn configuration, which limits are between Zoo Drive and Memorial Drive and Forest Lawn entrance. West of Forest Lawn, it retains a four-lane configuration. We asked them if they could share their traffic analysis as it pertains to spill-over traffic onto Riverside and Alameda. So we are in ongoing conversations with them about this project, ensuring that we can mitigate potential impacts if they proceed. Regarding the new parking permit registration process, we are using, we are shifting from hang tags and stickers to license plate reader. This helps us-
If we could please be respectful, everybody deserves a right to hear what Mr. Prescott has to say, especially the folks that came here to ask about it, so.
The most consistent complaint we got about parking, permit parking, is the lack of enforcement. A license plate reader will allow the parking enforcement team to simply drive up the street, and it will read license plates. If a license plate pops up that's not registered or permitted, it will automatically generate a ticket, and it's just a quick, easy way to manage that. For, for the residential permits, you create your account. So in 2021, we went to online renewal. Sorry, Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to try to be quick. We went to online renewal, and there was some consternation about that because some people didn't want to create an online account, but there were still the hang tags and the stickers. So we've gone completely to the online renewal, registration and renewal, and then the readers, right, for the license plate. So once you create your personal account, it's there. You can set it up to automatically renew. You never have to do it again until your credit card expires, right? For guests, we have a challenge with the guest visitor parking permits, and that is that the system we are using now does not allow us to charge such a low amount of money, a dollar. So, so what we've decided to do is for the first six months of this program, the visitor parking permits will be free. And that way, you just put the, you put the license plate in, and before your guest even arrives, the, they already have a guest parking permit, okay? The car will, the enforcement will drive by. All right. If you're having a large event currently at your home where you have a significant number of guests, what we have done in the past, because this is Burbank, we're not Los Angeles, you can generally reach us, you call us and let us know, and we will suspend enforcement on your block, okay, for, for the duration of your, your big event. There are caretaker permits which exist now for caretakers. If you have a regular, regularly occurring caretaker, you can obtain a permit for them. If you have a situation which was described by one of the callers where there's a sudden influx of people who need to be there, I understand what that's like, been through that myself, simply call us. If you have a unique situation, if you have a situation you don't know what the proper permit is that for that, just give us a call. You can call 818-238-5290, 818-238-5290. You can also email parking@burbankca.gov. Let's see. The residential parking permit, oh, also RV parking. You can buy more than one day's worth of RV parking permit at a time. So if you need to park there for three days, you can do that. I think it's up to 96 days a year, because we understand folks who are going on trips need to get the RV out, load it up, clean it up, gas it up, and so on. So, so you can obtain that. The, the, the cost of permits are consistent with the city's cost recovery policy, which is that we subsidize certain things a certain amount, depending on who benefits from it. So, so the, the actual cost of, of a permit, if we're going to charge for the cost of implementing the program, enforcement, and that sort of stuff, is actually significantly more than the $26 a year, but it's, but it's, but it's subsidized, because the residents benefit from it, but also the, the overall community benefits from that. I think-
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I ask Mr. Prescott a clarifying question?
Yes, Mr. McDougal, you may.
Do any of these parking permit issues have anything to do with consent agenda item number four regarding parker meter zones?
No.
Thank you.
That is separate. Yeah. So if you want to call, we can clarify. I'll just point out, the parking authority is actually a parking analyst, a permit tech, and a temporary permit tech.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. I think you addressed most everybody's concerns, but I saw some shaking heads in the crowd, so if they have questions or concerns, where can they call? One more time. Thank you, Mr. Prescott.
You're welcome.
So the head shaking relates to a restriction on the permits. You can't get more than three days in a row, which mimics our 72-hour parking restriction. That was intentional because when we did the large commercial, large non-commercial vehicle parking, the LNCV process with the Traffic Commission, which no longer exists, we tried to come up with a paper system that was more easy for police to enforce that mimicked the 72 hours. It only lets you get three days at a time, but you can get up to 96 days a year, so it can be cumbersome if you don't have the proper spacing. But I would agree, they should call staff and see if there aren't some other accommodations.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. City Manager.
I just have one more. There was a comment related to the increased height on the railings for Magnolia and Olive, so we actually have some good news. There's a couple of projects in progress, and I'm going to have our Public Works Director, Ken Berkman, briefly discuss them.
Mr. Berkman, welcome.
Yes, nice to be here, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you. We have an active project right now in our capital improvement program, the Magnolia and Olive Bridges railing replacements and deck rehabilitations. We are in discussions, staff with Caltrans staff, looking through options, doing preliminary designs with a myriad of their departments, so it's a time-consuming task, but we are working on it, and hopefully we'll expect to get through that process this fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Berkman. That's encouraging to hear. Alrighty. Any other staff comments? Nope. Seeing none, I will go to council. Who would like to begin? Councilwoman, I'm not going to pick on you because I see the like-
No, go ahead and pick on me, I'm fine.
You're ready to go.
I do appreciate all the responses from staff. They addressed really all the circles and questions that I was going to ask. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. We will discuss the agenda item for some of you who spoke about the Mariposa Project, and I do want to acknowledge the amount of emails that we did receive from the community, so thank you all for sending the emails. I responded to some of them, not all of them, because there were a lot, but thank you. Thank you for everything you provided us and all your concerns. I do want to talk really quick about, and all the, the members that came in who applied for the Cultural Arts Commission, thank you for being here tonight, introducing yourself, because it's very helpful to see your face and know who you are, who you are, instead of just looking at your name on the application. So I do appreciate that. And the, for Mark mentioned about the Magnolia event, yes, it was extremely successful, that's why we couldn't find parking, and I do completely understand that it was tough to find parking. I think I walked over a mile and a half to get there, so that's a sign of success, and hopefully next year when the- And hopefully next year, when they're planning, they can look at some alternative for transportation. So sometime, crowd and walking is a good thing because that means the event worked out for all of the community. So that's it, thank you.
Councilmember Anthony?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming down. There were a couple of items, there's a public hearing later, and then a report. We'll get to those at that time, and we'll have council comments. So I'll address some of the issues that were brought up that have, were not on the agenda. Ms. Radley, I agree, the fence could be higher. Mr. Ingram, I agree, the railing could be higher. Mr. Scroggs, I agree, with your wife, take an Uber. Okay. And thank you all too who participated in the Magnolia event. It was packed and fantastic. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. Councilmember Takahashi?
Thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor. Thank you all for coming out tonight and speaking on what's important to you. It's important for us to hear. Thanks to those who wrote emails and who called and who connected with us on all the topics as well. For the folks who spoke about the public hearing item, Mariposa, I took notes on your comments. Your comments will not be included in the public hearing record, but we will listen, we heard them, and so we will definitely keep them in mind when we're discussing it. For the cultural arts folks, I echo Councilmember Mullins' sentiment of it's so great to see you come out and actually introduce yourselves for us to see your face and hear your voice and learn a little bit about you. Really appreciate it. But we will talk about that item when we get there. So a few items that are not related to agenda items really quick. So Ms. Ewing, although you did speak about the Mariposa, you mentioned, is Ms. Ewing still here? Yes, no, yes? No? Okay, well, it doesn't matter, you don't have to get up or anything. But just if you're listening or if you're here, you had mentioned a list of studies. I loved data, so please send me those studies. I want to see them, if you can. And let's see, to Ms. Neal, who spoke pretty early on, and it looked like maybe, maybe you're 10, 11, 12 years old. So brave of you to come out and speak in front of us. This can be kind of a daunting position to sit in front of the mic. And not only did you speak in front of us from your heart, you did it without notes. So I can't even do that. So congratulations on doing that. Keep coming back. Let's see. Most of the other questions were covered. Oh, and for the, the low railing and the fence, I will be asking for a memo later to get update on that. We will also get an update more detailed. And that's it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Takahashi. And thank you to everybody who spoke today. Like my colleague shared, we're about to enter the agenda items, so we'll talk about those things there and your comments there. And for those of you who commented online or via email, we've also received them, we've read them, and they will be part of that discussion. Mr. Scroggs, about the shuttle service. I believe the folks who organize Holiday in the Park are listening tonight, and if not, happy to relay the message. But yes, very successful event. All of us in Magnolia Park were happy to be out there and enjoying the festivities. And if you missed it, don't worry, there's next year, and we also have our wine walk next year as well. To Ms. Liz Radley, thank you for sharing the information with us. I know we didn't have enough copies to get it to everybody, but I know we've all seen the map and walked through it with you. Thank you for taking us on that walk. And we will receive the copies tomorrow as soon as the city clerk is able to distribute them. And I will say, it seems that Ms. Radley has had, taken the initiative, thank you, and had more success reaching the Army Corps. So I encourage her to connect with Mr. Prescott and our C.D. department. I think they could use your help. And finally, I would like to continue to encourage the folks who are having parking issues to call that number to connect with our staff. They clearly need to hear from you all. They, they are open to hearing your concerns, and they want to talk. And I think it'll be the best way we can come to a resolution. I always say, you all live in the neighborhoods the same way I know my street better than anybody. You all know your streets better than anybody, and I encourage you to call staff so we can come to a resolution on this parking situation. And thank you for coming out here tonight and making your voices heard. Finally, Ms. Vivian Neal, thank you for coming up here. You are so much younger than me, and I'm the youngest person to chair this meeting, ever. So thank you for coming up here. I did not have the bravery to do what you did at your age, and thank you. I really appreciate it. You're very brave, and your voice is heard. Those are all my comments right now. And thank you all for coming and bearing with us throughout this meeting. We appreciate it. Alrighty. Now is the time for the consent calendar. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Tonight, we have eight items on consent. Item one is approval of the Housing Authority Minutes of the Joint Meeting of October 15th, 2024. Item two is approval of the Parking Authority Minutes of the Joint Meeting of September 24th, 2024. Item three is adoption of an ordinance amending Burbank Municipal Code Sections 2-4-601 and 2-4-603, transient occupancy tax. Item four is adoption of an ordinance adding Article 30 to Chapter 1 of Title 6 of the Burbank Municipal Code to establish a parking meter zone in downtown Burbank. Item five is adoption of a resolution authorizing the execution of a sole-source multi-year renewal agreement with Cersei Dynex for integrated library systems software. Item six is approval to accept $679,500 from the Los Angeles County Aging and Disabilities Department, modernizing Older Californians Act funding to contracted elderly nutrition program, Older American Act, Title III C-1 and Title III C-2 services, and amend the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. Item seven is approval of the request for the use of business cards by the Senior Citizen Board. Item eight is approval of the Burbank Water and Power 2024 Street Lighting Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I make a motion to move the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Mullins, second by Anthony? Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Perez? Yes. Thank you. Consent calendar passes 5-0. Alrighty. 4-0, wow. Old habits die hard. Alrighty. This is the time and place for the hearing for project number 24-0002257, adoption of a resolution in consideration of the Community Development Director's determination and approval of the streamlined ministerial design review for a multifamily residential project at 910 South Mariposa Street pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Title 10, Chapter 1, zoning Division 12 streamlined ministerial approval process and Senate Bill 35, California Government Code Section 65913.4, and vesting tentative map. If you wish to comment on this item in person, please present the Salmon Public Hearing Card to the city clerk. If you wish to speak over the phone, please call now at 818-238-3335. You will be placed in a queue until the public hearing comment period begins. Before we begin, are there any ex parte or other disclosures related to this hearing?
No. Just really briefly, this morning, I met with a resident in the Rancho and took a tour of the site. And I also had a brief call with one of the representatives from the developer, and I had a number of conversations with residents in the Rancho.
Thank you, Councilwoman Takahashi. I will also disclose that I met with a resident to tour the project site. Thank you. As I shared earlier, Ms. Liz Radley, thank you for the tour. Alrighty. Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
They have.
And do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and other documents?
You do.
And has the city received any written communications on this matter? And have they been provided to all city council members?
Yes, we received a total of 133 comments.
And will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
May I please have the presentation? Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor Perez, members of the City Council. My name is Joseph Anibuchi, Associate Planner with the Planning Division of the Community Development Department. And this evening, I will be presenting the council to counsel the Community Development Director's determination that the proposed SB 35 project located at 910 South Mariposa Street is consistent with applicable objective zoning, subdivision, and design review standards. The project is a 40-unit, five-story multifamily residential development on a 1.01-acre site located at 910 South Mariposa Street. It was submitted to the city on May 10th, 2024 as an SB 35 residential streamlined ministerial approval process application pursuant to Senate Bill 35, and is subject to the corresponding requirements in Burbank Municipal Code Title 10, Chapter 1. A temporary wholesale business is currently in operation on the project site. California Government Code Section 65913.4a2b requires that at least 75% of the perimeter of the site adjoins parcels that are developed with urban uses. For the purposes of this section, parcels that are only separated by a street or highway shall be considered to be adjoined. California Government Code Section 65913.4K defines urban uses as any current or former residential, commercial, public-institutional, transit or transportation passenger facility, or retail use, or any combination of those uses. The project site currently adjoins parcels that are developed with urban uses that include residential and commercial uses on all sides of the subject property. Therefore, the project is consistent with this site eligibility requirement. The northern boundary of the project site is 357 linear feet and abuts 820 South Mariposa Street. The current business occupant listed at that address is Applied Inventions. The business moved to its current site in 2017 and has a business license that describes the use as general office. Staff also identified the following classifications from the National American Industry Classification System, or NASICS codes, that have been used to classify the business at this location. The NASICS codes that have been used for Applied Invention LLC include Systems Engineering at 5413301 and Computer Vision at 518210-20. Industries with NASICS codes that begin with 54 are professional, scientific, and technical services sector companies, comprising of establishments that specialize in performing professional, scientific, and technical activities for others. This description reflects the general office designation listed on the business license for Applied Invention LLC. Furthermore, the city's Building and Safety Division categorizes Applied Invention LLC as a miscellaneous business service. Based on the company's own description of who they are, quote, "Applied Invention is a multidisciplinary innovation company that partners with corporations to design and build new technologies to help them grow and adapt to rapidly changing environments." Additionally, the company identifies itself as providing IT consulting services. Therefore, staff concludes that the business in operation to the north of the subject site can be confirmed as an urban use, which is commercial in nature, consistent with applicable state law. The eastern boundary of the site is approximately 166 feet and abuts the L.A. Equestrian Center. The Equestrian Center is not within the city of Burbank. It is in the city of L.A., and is therefore subject to a different zoning designation. However, the uses within that site can be generally categorized as commercial as many of the services offered are for sale goods and services to consumers. Therefore, the site is considered an urban use. The southern boundary is approximately 254 feet. Studio Horse Rental is, is located in the M1 Limited Industrial Zone and offers a horse-riding service for a fee to customers. It is therefore considered a commercial retail use, which is permitted in the M1 zone. To the west of the site are single-family residential dwellings located in the R1H zone, and these uses are considered residential and are therefore considered urban uses pursuant to the definition. On December 26th, 2023, the project applicant Butterfly Gardens LLC submitted a notice of intent to submit a streamlined ministerial and eligibility checklist application. I'd like to note that since the project was submitted in December of 2023, it must still be reviewed under SB 35 and cannot be reviewed under SB 423, which did not take effect until January of 2024. The city notified the Native American tribes that are traditionally and culturally affiliated with the geographic area of the proposed project on December 28th, 2023. The city initiated consultation with two Native American tribes, the Fernandino Tavian Band of Mission Indians and the Gabriolino Band of Mission Indians Kiss Nation. The city finalized enforceable agreements with the Fernandino Tavian Band of Mission Indians on January 19th, 2024, which is Attachment 2 Exhibit A, and with the Gabriolino Band of Mission Indians Kiss Nation on February 28th, 2024, also enclosed in Attachment 2 Exhibit A. On April 18th, 2024, the applicant was notified that tribal enforceable agreements were executed, and the SB 35 NOI application process was complete. On May 10th, the city received a formal SB 35 application from the project applicant. After a thorough review, staff found that the application was incomplete. On July 1st, 2024, staff sent a letter to the project applicant confirming that the application was incomplete and that the project remained inconsistent with certain objective standards. On October 4th, 2024, the project applicant resubmitted the SB 35 application, which addressed staff's comments, including the submittal of a biologist report, which is included as Attachment 9 Exhibit A, an electrical load schedule, and secondary service schematic. The project's SB 35 application was deemed complete on November 4th, 2024, and during that same period, the project was also being reviewed to ensure consistency with objective zoning, subdivision, and design review standards pursuant to California Government Code Section 65913.4a1. The project, the project, can you hear me? Sorry. The project proposes the construction of one five-story multifamily residential structure containing a total of 40 condominium units, ranging in size from 946 square feet to 2,122 square feet. The project proposes a unit mix consisting of 32-bedroom units and, of 31 two-bedroom units and nine three-bedroom units. Additionally, there are 45 parking spaces within an enclosed semi-subterranean parking level, private open space in the form of patios and upper-level balconies. And the project includes six affordable units designated as for-sale units for three very-low-income households and three moderate-income households that will be deed-restricted as affordable for 45 years. Finally, the project will dedicate approximately 37 foot, let me try that again. Finally, the project will dedicate approximately 37 feet wide by 144 feet-deep area along the site's frontage, which will, which will be developed as part of a street widening to include a future Equestrian Trail connection. The site is located in the M1 Limited Industrial Zone and has a Burbank 2035 General Plan land use designation of Rancho Commercial. To the north, the site is bordered by commercial uses in the M1 zone. To the east is the L.A. Equestrian Center, a commercial use outside of Burbank city limits in the city of Los Angeles. To the south, commercial use is located in the M1. And to the west, across South Mariposa Street, single-family residential dwelling units in the R1H zone. The project site is zoned M1 and would otherwise be subject to all M1 zone objective design review and development standards. However, since this is a residential project in a non-residential zone, the project is subject to development standards listed in Burbank Municipal Code Sections 10-1-621 through 10-1-624. These are the multifamily residential-only development and non-residential zone standards. These standards include, but are not limited to, objective criteria pertaining to lot coverage, building height, private open space, common areas and amenities, building setbacks, plane breaks and modulations, building orientation and design, landscaping, and required parking areas and driveways. areas and driveways. Pursuant to BMC Sections ten dash one dash eight oh six G, these standards supersede development standards in Burbank Municipal Code Section ten dash one dash eight oh six for M-one zoned sites. In the M-one zone, all uses must be consistent with the allowable maximum residential density as prescribed in the general plan pursuant to the General Plan Consistency Table listed in BMC Section ten dash one dash eight oh one point five. The general plan land use designation for the property is Rancho Commercial, and the maximum density is twenty dwelling units per acre. Pursuant to California Government Code Section six five nine one five, the applicant proposes fifteen percent of the project's total units to be designated for very low income and how fifteen percent of the households of the project's total units for moderate-income households and therefore requests a one hundred percent density bonus increase. The state mandated one hundred percent density bonus increase allows a maximum of forty dwelling units on the project site. Burbank Municipal Code Section ten dash one dash six two four A requires the front minimum setback for all structures excluding fully subterranean, semi-subterranean, and above-grade parking structures to be at least five feet from the front lot line or twenty percent of the building height, whichever is greater. This standard also permits the setback to be averaged. The project proposes a building height of sixty-three point seven feet, and the setback requirement is twelve point seven five feet. The project, the project provides an average setback of twenty-six and a half feet along the first floor, thirty point twelve feet along the second, third, and fourth floors, and sixty-one point four eight along the along the fifth floor. Therefore, the setback requirement is met. Burbank Municipal Code Section ten dash one dash six two four E four permits encroachments into required setback areas by various structural components such as balconies. The project also requests an incentive under state density bonus law to provide relief from Burbank Municipal Code Sections ten dash one six two four E, which outlines maximum encroachments of various structures or objects, including balconies, into setback areas. The incentive would permit certain balconies to encroach within one and a half feet of the proposed front property line. Therefore, the project will comply with the applicable setback requirements. The application proposes one twenty-foot-wide entry driveway located along the northern portion of the site. A twenty-six-foot-wide fire lane is located along along the northern edge of the site and provides a buffer between the proposed building, proposed common open space, and the commercial property located to the north of this site. A walkway bounds the site to the south, providing a buffered pedestrian pathway that connects users to both proposed common open space areas. The project proposes one five-story building with a front facade oriented towards South Mariposa Street. Maximum height for the project is determined by the project's distance from the closest lot line of any property zoned for residential use. The applicant proposes one five-story multifamily residential building that is located approximately seventy-six feet from the closest R-one H lot located across Mariposa Street. A forty-foot maximum height is permitted for any multifamily property that is within one hundred and forty-nine feet distance from the closest residential lot. Therefore, the maximum height permitted for this structure is forty feet. Pursuant to state density bonus law, the project is eligible for three incentives or concessions and additional waivers. The project is requesting a waiver of development standards for height to allow a maximum height of sixty-three point seven one feet to accommodate the building the building envelope necessary to facilitate the development of the proposed number of housing units allowed under state density bonus law and the city's zoning and general plan allowable density. The proposed increased height is a permitted waiver under state density bonus law, and its approval ensures the project's compliance with state and local objective standards. The project incorporates design elements of Spanish colonial-style architecture for its multifamily residential development. The proposed buildings feature architectural elements such as red clay roof tiles and stucco as the primary finish. Additional elements such as recessed windows, arched windows, and plane breaks provide visual variation across all building facades. Each elevation provides fenestration at all five levels, ensuring that residents and pedestrians alike are not surrounded by blank walls. The primary colors for the exterior finishes are complementary and include a combination of neutral and earth-tone colors. The project applicant is eligible for three incentives because the project includes at least fifteen percent very low-income units in addition to waivers from development standards. The first incentive request is for deferral of the development impact fees to twenty-four months after the issuance of the of the certificate of occupancy. Deferral of the fees will allow the applicant to construct and sell the units prior to the payment of the fees and allow the existing financing for the project to be allocated toward permitting and construction costs for the six affordable units. This incentive is permitted pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Section ten dash one dash six four zero A three, and this incentive request is approved subject to the applicant furnishing a performance bond in the total amount of the development impact fees applicable to the project on a form approved by the city to guarantee payment of any fees deferred under this incentive request. The second incentive request is to provide relief from BMC Section ten dash one dash six two four E, which outlines maximum encroachments of various structures or objects, including balconies, into setback areas. The request for relief from this standard is to permit certain balconies to be a minimum of one and a half feet, one and a half feet from the property line after dedication. This incentive will allow the building to be designed more efficiently, given the irregular shape of the lot and the angle of the front lot line related to the proposed structure. The incentive request is approved as the incentive will allow an expansion of the project's building footprint so that additional permitted residential units under state density bonus law can be provided, which would help offset the cost of providing affordable units. The third incentive request is for relief from the development standards for plane breaks and modulation. Pursuant to BMC Section ten dash one dash six two four G one A, a plane break shall be provided along each street-facing facade exceeding fifty feet in width. The plane break shall be of at least ten percent of the facade width, or twenty feet, whichever is greater. The application of this standard would require the project to include a new unit unique unit type resulting in a loss of construction efficiency and would require smaller unit sizes along the front of the building. The waiver is approved as staff found the incentive will allow the applicant to maintain the existing proposed unit sizes along the front facade of the building, thereby reducing the overall cost per square foot of providing affordable units. The first waiver request is for relief from the development standards for height. Pursuant to the Burbank to BMC ten dash one dash six two four D, the maximum height for the proposed building is forty feet, and because the project is within one hundred and forty-nine feet distance from the closest residential lot located across Mariposa Street. The applicant is proposing a maximum height of sixty-three point seven feet to include a fourth and fifth floor, which is necessary to accommodate the increased forty units of density as permitted under state density bonus law, and to accommodate the six proposed affordable units. The waiver request is approved as staff found the waiver is necessary to physically accommodate the necessary building envelope to accommodate the total of forty dwelling units, including the designated affordable units for very low-income and moderate-income households as permitted under state density bonus law. The project has been reviewed for conformance with the Burbank two thousand and thirty-five general plan. The project will dedicate land to ensure consistency with Table M-one of general plan of the general plan mobility element, and furthermore, the project will maintain consistency with the land use element of the general plan. Exhibit B included Attachment One to the staff report provides the project's consistency analysis table. I'd like to draw counsel's attention to the consistency matrix that was used to determine compliance with objective zoning standards. Staff provided counsel with an updated matrix that denotes changes in red text and strike through red text, which address previously previously noted language that identified specific project objective standards as not consistent. To provide further clarification and remaining consistent with the staff report findings, the consistency matrix has been updated to show all applicable project objective standards have been met pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Section ten dash one dash nineteen three oh two B three as the project applicant has either revised the project development plans dated November seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, or compliance with the standards included in the project's conditions of approval. And these articles in front of you are the are the articles that staff used to review the project. Article five, the use table and general use regulations. Article six, the residential use uses and standards. Article eight, industrial uses and standards. Article eleven, general property development regulations. And article fourteen, the general off-street parking standards. The project applicant has submitted a vesting tentative track map number eight four zero six zero to create one common lot with forty condominium units. The applicant proposes to sell the individual condominium units while having the Future Homeowners Association maintain the common areas of the project site. The processing of the vesting tentative track map is subject to a ministerial process as part of the SB thirty-five streamlined ministerial approval process. The city reviewed the track map application and found it to be consistent with the objective subdivision standards in Title eleven. Staff has included objective standard conditions for the vesting tentative track map number eight four zero six zero approval, including payment of prevailing wages and the use of a skilled and trained workforce as required by California Government Code Section six five nine one three point four A nine that included as part of the project's conditions of approval as noted in Attachment One, Exhibit A. The proposed SB thirty-five project is not subject to sequel review. The California Environmental Quality Act of the Public Resources Code does not apply to projects qualifying for the streamlined ministerial approval process under SB thirty-five. And before I conclude, I'd like to once again say that the council has reviewed, has received an updated consistency matrix that shows staff's analysis of this resubmitted plans. The resubmitted plans were updated to either be consistent with objective zoning standards or conditions of approval have been added to ensure compliance with these standards, and this is pursuant, again, to BMC Section ten dash one dash nineteen three oh two B three.
And I would just add that copies of that updated matrix were put up front. Last time we checked, there were still about eight of them by the binder in the entryway.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Therefore, staff recommends the city council adopt the resolution of the city council of the city of Burbank confirming the community development director's determination that project number two-two dash zero 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 two two five seven located at nine ten South Mariposa Street is consistent with all of the objective zoning subdivision standards and design review standards applicable to the project and approving the project's streamlined ministerial design review and vesting tentative track map number eight four zero six zero. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Onyebuchi. Now, before we open up the hearing to the public, is the applicant or the representative available to address the city council? All right, seeing that you're here, you will have a maximum time of fifteen minutes to make your presentation.
I'm going to refer to it at the end. Good evening, members of the council, staff, and members of the public. Happy Thanksgiving week to everyone listening. My name is Garen Gozumian, and I represent Butterfly Gardens LLC, who is the applicant for the forty-unit SB thirty-five development project that is the subject of tonight's public hearing and is also the owner of the site where it is proposed. We look forward to your consideration of our project application, which includes six affordable housing units for very low and moderate-income households. I would like to thank all city of Burbank interdepartmental staff who have worked on this project. Our site and our application have gone through a very extensive review, and staff has been thorough, fair, and transparent throughout. I especially want to thank city planning staff, namely Joseph Onyebuchi as the lead planner on this project, and Fred Ramirez and his entire team for their consistent professionalism. Tonight, you will consider the community development department's determination that the site and the forty-unit multifamily project qualify for streamlined ministerial approval pursuant to California Senate Bill thirty-five. As you know, this is not the first project application that we submitted to the city. It is the third. Those first two projects have been ruled out and have no bearing whatsoever on your decision tonight. Although we are solely focused on the forty-unit project here tonight, I think it's important to briefly acknowledge how we arrived at this point, simply to provide context to what will surely be a charged discussion. We entered into a contract to purchase the property in March of two thousand and twenty-one, after the property had been publicly listed for two years without interest from equine operators or developers. Initially, we proposed an ultra-low-density commercial project with a barn-style design and submitted a development review application in March two thousand and twenty-two, after spending significant resources for architects, landscape architects, land use attorneys, and application fees. This was not an SB thirty-five project, but rather a local control project subject to CEQA with discretionary review by the city and the Rancho Review Board of Neighbors. We wholeheartedly believed in the potential for a win-win partnership with the Rancho and engaged in a nine-month comprehensive outreach effort. We mailed a letter of introduction to every address in the Rancho, personally knocked on doors, communicated via email, and organized Zoom and in-person coffee meetings with Rancho neighbors who accepted our invitation to connect. We received feedback and answered questions via email with numerous neighbors, including but not limited to Delia Duke, Katie Warner, Jill Heffley, Deanna McMenamy, Linda Barnes, Raquel Lynn, Carol Solner, Robert Mills, Kathy Marks, Dana Cameron, Robin Zocino, Nancy Gomez, Rosie Dean, Suzie Borders, Robin Hawks, among others. We had in-person coffee meetings with Jay Geisenheimer, Joseph and Laura LaRoca, Gail Just, Michael Elrich, Monica Horn, Nicola Ellis, and many others within the broader Burbank community. We did not get the response that we hoped for. Most of our meetings were one-and-done, and our follow-up inquiries were ignored. There was, however, a group of four Rancho neighborhood leaders who meaningfully engaged with us on an ongoing basis. These leaders were Emily Gabel-Luddy, Nori Walla, Elisa Cunningham, and Bill Luddy. We met with them on three separate occasions between March and June of two thousand and twenty-two to present the project, exchange ideas, and get their feedback as to how we could improve the project. On March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, we went on a horseback ride with Ms. Gabel-Luddy and Ms. Walla around the LAEC perimeter over the bridge and into Griffith Park to better understand the Equestrian Trails and equine community. We continued to educate ourselves about equine culture. We met with many different equine professionals, including Benjamin Martinez and Dr. William Bradley of the LAEC, Dr. David Ramey of the Los Angeles Equine Advisory Committee. We even took a visit to the Chino Valley Equine Hospital to explore their facilities. Based on those experiences and feedback, at our third and last meeting with the Rancho leaders, we proposed to incorporate an equine use into our project, including a horse diagnostic room or area where horses could be triaged, and alternatively, a rest stop or hitching post at the front of the site to serve as a water station for horses coming to and from the bridge. They agreed to consider those options and thought it might be a good idea to broaden the conversation to include other key neighbors. Following that summer, after repeated efforts to follow up, the Rancho leaders expressed that they had no further comment and communication was cut off. This was a clear signal to us that the project would not have survived Rancho Review Board and City Council review, so as a result, we decided to drop our original application and pursue a residential project under SB thirty-five. All of our time, money, and effort spent had been lost. In October of two thousand and twenty-two, we filed a new application for a twenty-three-unit SB thirty-five townhouse project. We had to start over, having committed, having to commit additional resources to architects, civil engineers, landscape architects, attorneys, and all new application fees to the city. We mindfully designed a low-density SB thirty-five, intentionally proposing less than the maximum allowed in order to remain more compatible with the neighborhood aesthetic. The project went through a review process and was approved by this council in July of two thousand and twenty-three. Shortly after, Rancho leaders sued the city and us to attempt to have the project approval overturned. Although the project approval held strong legal footing rooted in state law, and the legal arguments against the project were lacking substantial merit, it became clear that the lawsuit would be effective in requiring us to commit substantial resources to defend against it, causing a significant delay to the project. Given the economic, various economic conditions at the time, including increased interest rates, our estimation and projection of the costs and resources needed to defend, that materially affected the feasibility of the twenty-three-unit project. Given the dire financial projections and consequences to our investment, we decided to submit a new SB thirty-five application, one seeking the maximum density allowed by law. Again, I just want to make clear that I'm just putting this out there for comment. It has no bearing whatsoever on what we're deciding on tonight, and while we were greatly disappointed that we could not deliver a win-win low-density project to the Rancho, we are equally as excited for our new project that will provide massive benefits to the city of Burbank and broader community. And that is how we have arrived at the project we are discussing tonight, and this application is not new. This project was filed almost a year ago, and over the course of that time, we've been solely focused on this forty-unit project that is the subject of tonight's hearing. Forty more units, including six affordable housing unit opportunities, will become available in a city that is not meeting housing needs that plague a region. Of the six affordable housing units, three of them will be reserved for very low-income households, and the other three will be reserved for moderate-income households. Notwithstanding the added density, the project provides plenty of open space. Aside from the private patios and balconies, there are common areas at the rear of the site, within the interior courtyard, and also on the rooftop. A large dedication at the front of the site that is thirty-seven feet deep along the entire frontage will improve Mariposa Street by widening the roadway, constructing a new seven-foot landscape parkway sidewalk and a thirteen-foot-wide bridle- landscape parkway sidewalk and a 13-foot-wide bridle trail. In addition to the large dedication, our plans continue to maintain a substantial buffer on all sides from vehicular, pedestrian, and equestrian travel due to a deliberate expansion of the required setbacks. And as you can see from this slide, this shows you the detail of the new dedication that will improve the existing condition on Mariposa Street. Out of the 37 feet, 12 feet will be used to widen the roadway. There will be a seven-foot continuously landscaped parkway, a five-foot sidewalk, and then a 13-foot-wide bridle trail. And after that, the project is set back an additional 23 feet, 2 inches average from that point, more than the 12-foot, 9-inch average requirement. This is a cross-section of what Mariposa will look like after the project is constructed at the front of our site. That red vertical line shows you the current property line, and the blue line shows you the new property line after the dedication. And you'll see that the first 12 feet is to widen the road, then 7, 5, and 13. So there'll be about 90 feet average from the nearest R1H property line to the average This graphic is an approximation on the closest part of the building footprint distance to the bridge. After the dedication and setback, that is an approximate distance of 105.2 feet. Another key point is where the vehicles will be coming. That's the center of the vehicular driveway that is proposed. Actually, it's further back than that. That's the old property line. So it's at least 171.2 feet approximate from where the cars will be coming in and out of the parking garage. This is at the rear, the closest point of the rear building footprint to the trail to the east around the Los Angeles Equestrian Center, and that is 70.7 feet approximate. And this is to the south, where the perimeter trail of the Los Angeles Equestrian Center comes around and meets the bridge to the nearest approximate building footprint, 92.9 feet. This is a visual, bird's-eye view of the horses traveling after they cross Mariposa, how they get into Griffith Park, going under the 134 freeway and around the Headworks This is a map indicating safe access to the bridge through protected bridle trails. The main two being from the west and the east, one coming from Polywog and one coming from the Los Angeles Equestrian Center, both providing safe access to the bridge, both shielded from nearby right-of-ways by dense foliage and setback from Valley Heart in particular. And then another connection coming south on Mariposa, a turn can be made on Dinkara, which has an outlet into the perimeter trail of the Los Angeles Equestrian Center, which also connects down to the bridge safely. I would like to express my sincere appreciation to our development team for their thoughtful designs and tireless work ethic, starting with Bola Dark Architects, Jean Pierre Boladian, Farnoosh Farmer and their team, Jim Kawamura, Kerry Brockman and their team at KHR Civil Engineers, Peter Duarte and Sasha Matienzo from StudioPad Landscape Architects, and to Varan Balasanyan from Novus Design Studio, our principal electrical engineer. These are all passionate professionals who take immense pride in their work. It has been an honor working with them. Aside from the dedication, the project will provide benefits to the city as it will generate over half a million dollars in capital improvement funds for the city in the form of development impact fees and school board fees to improve roads, sewers, schools, and all city services in the area. The project will boost the local economy as future residents will generate sales tax and property tax revenue. State of California has mandated Burbank to create 12,000 housing units during the current housing cycle. SB 35 facilitates residential development on certain commercial lots, but only if they were already designated for future residential use in the general plan, such as the case with this site, as the general plan was adopted in 2013 and includes a land use designation for residential for the Rancho commercial area. Combined with the Pickwick Project, this development represents only 1% of the 12,000-unit mandate. With no new housing built in the Rancho for around 30 years, this project presents an exciting opportunity for more residents to live in this neighborhood and enjoy the unique qualities. Thank you for your time and attention. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council on this public hearing item only. The public hearing public comment period is now beginning, and no additional cards, except for that last one there, will be accepted at this time. All right. Madam City Clerk, how many public comment cards do we have for the public hearing, and how many callers do we have in the queue?
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight cards and six callers. So we're at 43, 45 in that neighborhood.
For the record, I have 39 cards here.
Some more got handed in.
Got a couple stragglers there. All right. So you said 43 total-ish? Okay. So given, based on the 43 number of speakers, the time limit for the public hearing public comment period is one minute each. Based on council law guidelines that allow that 40-plus speakers, we go to one minute each. All righty. Let us begin. I will just remind everybody one more time, while somebody is speaking, please just to be respectful of them. It's really hard to come up here, as you saw earlier. If somebody's speaking, please don't boo, cheer, et cetera, and if we could keep it down so that folks can just hear their name when it's called. All righty. My first speaker is Alisa Cunningham, followed by Roy Simonson. You will have one minute.
Having approved the initial 23-unit project, I imagine you think it's a safe bet to approve this one, too. However, the initial approval was flawed, and this would be as well. You have already received a significant amount of indisputable evidence as to why this new project does not qualify under SB 35. I know that if you read about, read all of it, think about it, and apply it, there is no way to approve this. What is at stake is bigger than our neighborhood and the horses. Given its newly minted status on the National Register of Historic Places, this amps up the visibility of the bridge and what surrounds it. There are parties affected by this project who are now just becoming aware of it being blown up to 40 units and five stories and have significant objections. Please review this with fresh eyes and an open mind, and send a message that Burbank follows the rules. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Roy Simonson, followed by Ilse Ackerman. And please correct me if I misspell your name.
Counsel, staff, I have here from the development team of Butterfly Gardens. Butterfly Gardens is a partnership of Los Angeles neighbors and are passionate about providing our neighborhoods with quality and responsible development. This is a responsible, single-family, horsekeeping neighborhood on a horse trail by the Equestrian Bridge. The City of Burbank has a diverse culture and economy. Burbank maintains a small-town feel while being at the forefront of innovation and sustainability. Our goal is to build on that legacy and make a positive impact on the community. This will be a profoundly negative impact on the equestrian communities of Burbank, Glendale, and Los Angeles. We hope this project at 910 Mariposa reflects our passion.
That's your time, Roy. Thank you.
Don't be a part of the lie.
My next speaker is Ilse Ackerman, followed by Tara Barber. I'm not seeing them. I'm guessing that's not you. All righty. Followed by Tara Barber.
I have the media at your table, too. Is that open? I submitted it yesterday. Awesome. Thank you. All right. I'm ready. Go ahead and play it. Good evening, council. I urge you to consider the serious risk of the Mariposa Two development. Construction on a single-lane road will block emergency routes, delaying official first responders, as the video clearly shows. Additionally, our already strained sewer infrastructure, which frequently malfunctions and produces odors, will be overwhelmed by additional units, leading to overflows, leaks, and serious health hazards. If this project moves forward, taxpayers will have to shoulder the costly burden of fixing those preventable issues. Please prioritize the safety and well-being of our community by rejecting this development. Thank you for your consideration, and please remember, your vote matters to many people, animals, and the habitat.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Gail Just, followed by Veronica Christensen.
Mariposa Project Two does not meet site eligibility for many reasons. I will focus on just one. There are unresolved ecological concerns regarding the presence of sensitive species on this project's site. Developers' hire biologist James McNutt conducted his survey in a constrained timeframe. The survey may not have been thorough and may have been biased, as it was paid for by the developer. In 2022 and 2023, Daniel Cooper, a senior conservation biologist, submitted letters to city council highlighting that the project site represents a potential habitat for sensitive species. These findings, grounded in soil characteristics, vegetation cover, and microclimate data, met with no comprehensive rebuttals from the developer's biologist. Please deny approval of this project until these critical environment concerns are resolved.
Thank you for your comment. That's your time. All right. Our next speaker is Veronica Christensen, followed by Toni Asek.
I would like to address an aspect that hasn't been talked about much in relation to this project, and that is crime. Referring to the handout I just gave you, the proposed site of the Mariposa Project is located in the highest crime rate area in Burbank. According to the most recent data from FBI, the total crime rate in Burbank is 3,033.3 per 100,000 people. That's 30.51% higher than the national rate and 17.53% higher than the California total crime rate of 2,581. Another fact is urban density leads to higher crime. Higher-density housing units promote serious violent crime. Generally speaking, studies have found higher rates of robbery, aggravated assault, and rape in highly populated areas, and the higher rates of all violent crime. The Pickwick Project is already underway, and the potential for more crime will rise even higher if the Mariposa Project is approved. Between these two projects, the population density will be increased tremendously and will only further negatively impact the crime situation in this area.
Thank you for your comment. That's your time.
Your hands are not tied. Vote no.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Toni Asek, followed by Sherri Beltran.
Longtime Rancho owner, lifetime equestrian. Our area is unique, truly unique. You, along with all of its residents, need to fight to keep it just this way. The Mariposa condos do not belong there nor meet the true specs to be there. You will put our lives, animal lives, in serious danger and destroy a wonderful family neighborhood. The road in and out is a one-lane road. Tons of horses travel on it every single day. It leads to the historic bridge that is our only way into Griffith Park to ride. You will see every day, young, old, seniors, children, intermediate, average, beginner riders, all using this area, enjoying the lifestyle the Rancho represents and appeals to. You have the power to stop this insane development. Please use your elected choices smartly to represent your community. Maybe stop and think how you would feel if this were truly where you actually lived. What would your vote be then? Maybe we'll send your children out to ride on the horses.
Thank you. That's your time. Our next speaker is Sherri Beltran, followed by Kathy Marks.
I'm with Toni. I'm a newbie to Rancho. I moved, or I bought a townhouse about eight months ago. I sold four acres in beautiful Florida to move to this amazing community. I'm new here. I just, for eight months, have gotten to know this little town. I cannot imagine what all these people are going through that have lived here for years, watching the landscape of their town diminish. How can you sit there and listen to those little girls who are not going to be safe? And what cracks me up is that they're talking about riding while the construction is going on. They're not going to be able to ride when the construction is going on. How can you change this beautiful, unique town that I gave up everything in Florida to come to, to bring my horses to? How can you do this to this community?
Thank you for your comment. That's your time. Our next speaker is Kathy Marks, followed by Sabrina Silver. Kathy Marks, Sabrina Silver. Ma'am, you can only speak when you're at the microphone. Ma'am, you can only speak at the microphone when your time is counted, and this is the structure of the city.
Kathy Marks, I live on Valley Heart, and it's not fair we get one minute when the developers and this guy talk for over an hour and a half. It's not fair. This project is going to get someone killed or hurt. Valley Heart, if you don't know, and you guys should know, has no sidewalks. People walk on that street. Senior citizens walk on that street. High school kids, track teams run on that street. Senior citizens use that. We walk in the middle of the street because there's no sidewalks. This project is going to get someone hurt or killed. It's a matter of time. Is that what you people want to be responsible for? Is it? Because it's going to be on your head. You're going to destroy one of the few remaining equestrian properties in the whole United States of America. Is that what you want on you? That's what this place is. That's like a perfect neighborhood, and you're going to destroy it for what? Six little places that are supposedly local?
Thank you. That's your time. Thank you. That's your time. That's your time.
Do your job!
My next speaker is Sabrina Silver. Folks, we really need folks to be able to hear their name when their name is called. Please, let's be respectful of your neighbors and let them talk. Our next speaker, Sabrina Silver, see if copies to share. Feel free to give them to our city clerk here, who will be happy to share them with us. And Sabrina, you are followed by Nori Walla. You can start when you're ready. Thank you.
I'm wondering whether you have in front of you the things I just handed out yet. So you could follow along here.
Madam City Clerk, are we able to get those distributed right now? Or? In the meantime, if you're ever giving anything to our city clerk, we request 10 copies, and one of them has to go into the file, and you need enough for all five of us on a normal basis, and staff.
That's what I brought.
Thank you so much. We see you followed the rules, and we got everything right here.
Yeah. And I also emailed it to you earlier. There was a video that was emailed. Is that going to be able to be entered into the record?
Staff, did we receive that email?
There was a link to the MP4 that... They said they couldn't play it today because it didn't make that deadline, but I'm hoping it gets into the record.
Madam City Clerk, will the video that was submitted via email be able to go into the record? Okay, we can find that out for you, but if you emailed it to us, we have it available.
Okay, it's a link.
Alrighty, so your time can start.
Okay, so my time can start.
I would clarify, if you don't have the video before you, and it's not played during the meeting, there's really no way for you to consider it before you render a decision tonight. So I would say, until we see it, it can't really be part of the record.
Barring that, I printed screenshots, and you are holding them. They are in these PDFs, which I annotated. This is a very uniquely situated project. It is right on the edge of open space and recreation. And properly, the stables, all of the horses, like LAEC and the rental barn, should not be considered commercial, because the purpose of them is to recreate with your horse, or to use a horse to ride in the open spaces of Griffith Park. I wanted to touch on two things. One is that, in the smaller of the two handouts, I happened to be riding, and I heard a chainsaw. My horse wasn't happy, but I pulled out my phone and videoed, and somebody was cutting down a limb of an elderberry tree and chopping it up. And then this is here, a horse freaking out here, because the pipe stalls were being demolished at 910 Mariposa.
Thank you for your comment, that's your time. We have these for the record, thank you. Thank you. My next speaker is Nori Walla, followed by Chris Duvan. Ms. Walla, you may begin whenever you're ready.
Good evening, my name is Nori Walla. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've handed you three documents. One is from the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority. It's a letter dated November 26th. It's a very short letter. The second is a two-page picture of what's inside, Applied Inventions. You'll see that there's a tent on the outside, and you'll see what's in the inside. It's a machine. I know you've got my very lengthy public comment. The third is probably the most interesting, and this is a 3D rendition of what the project will look like. You really need to look at that. Your job as a council is to make decisions. Your duty is to independently judge the facts, apply those facts to the law, and make a reasoned decision. That decision must be based on substantial evidence, and that substantial evidence must be reasonable in nature, credible, and of solid value. Public trust and confidence are elevated when decision-makers exercise their independent judgment.
Ms. Walla, that's your time. Ms. Walla, that's your time, I'm sorry. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Chris Duvan, followed by Paul Fee.
Horses are flight animals, and they're easily spooked. The traffic noise, construction, so close to the perimeter trail, and only equestrian access to Griffith Park with absolutely no safe bypass would create safety hazards for equestrians. Furthermore, this project doesn't even meet the legal criteria for SB 35 approval. For this, the project to qualify must be, 75% of its perimeter must adjoining parcels with urban uses. According to the county, LA County Assessor, the property in north Applied Invention is categorized as 77.77% industrial, not urban, which disqualifies this development from streamlined approval. Trying to stretch the definition of urban to fit industrial site is just wrong. Please stop this project before somebody gets seriously hurt. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Paul Fee, followed by Lori Frey. Paul, you have one minute.
Hi. This project would forever change the Rancho. I know, because my dad walked me across that bridge to go hiking in Griffith Park, to go to Travel Town, to go to the live steamers, and now I do that with my grandchildren. Do you understand what you're doing, what your responsibility is? Burbank doesn't need this. The neighborhood doesn't need this. I don't need this. I oppose this.
Thank you for your comment. My next speaker is Lori Frey, followed by Liz Radley. Lori Frey, followed by Liz Radley.
Good evening. I'm invested in Burbank. I moved here over 11 years ago. I have a home on Valley Heart on a double lot. I have a duplex on Main Street, and I have property on Morningside. From what I understood, these owners of the property were offered $5 million for that property, so they wouldn't build. Personally, I'm not, I don't feel badly for them, that they have had to pay extra for attorneys or whatever. That comes with the territory. The new property line is talking about, defines safe access to the bridge. He said, "safe access." About two weeks ago, I was riding my horse around the perimeter in the area that is now behind Celia's and across the street, as you all know, is the Burbank, is the, excuse me, Pickwick area, and my horse spooked.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Liz Radley, followed by Jean Shamberger.
Good evening. I'd like to make a formal comment about equestrian safety. I am certified as a British Horse Society trainer, instructor, and stable manager, which is a formal training program in England. We have no such program here in the United States. I am qualified to act as an expert witness and a senior examiner. It's considered a bachelor of science level. I have more than 50 years of equestrian experience specializing in safety. It is my professional opinion that you cannot make this project safe in that location. There are details in the emails that you have all received, but essentially, as you've heard, horses are flight animals, and anyone who gets in their way will also get knocked over. The trail, which you have all seen from Poliwog, a statement that that is a safe trail is obviously false. Saying it's safe simply isn't true.
Sorry, Liz, that's your time. Thank you. Our next speaker is Jean Shamberger, followed by Lois Westhal.
Good evening, council. Jean Shamberger, longtime Rancho resident. Y'all like to follow the law. So do I. So do all of us. This presents a great opportunity to you to follow the law, because there is a fatal flaw in the determination of site eligibility for this project, and it is the finding that Applied Industrial is a commercial property and not an industrial property. There's a lot of evidence that's been provided to you. I seriously urge you to consider that, because this is not, while there's emotion, conscience, yimby, nimby, all these things, this is about following the law in SB 35. And the definitions of urban use and the definitions of infill do not include industrial. Characterizing this as commercial is incorrect. It is a fatal flaw. It is a cancer in the middle of the ministerial findings. And you, for all these reasons, would be crazy to accept that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Lois Westhal, followed by Marek Atherley.
Hello. 910 South Mariposa does not meet eligibility requirements, as the adjacent property is listed in LA County Assessor records as industrial, not commercial. Staff is misinformed, and their recommendation to approve this project is erroneous. Aside from that, the developer is seeking additional variances to the code in both height and setback. There are no buildings even close to that in this residential area, and it will stick out, dwarfing the surrounding area. The owner of the adjacent horse rental barn stated that if, when construction begins, he will close his business. Horses that close to noisy, dusty, ground-shaking build will not remain well, Colic and others, and novice riders will be at risk if horses jump in reaction to loud, sudden noises. Not to mention the horses living in the shadow of a five-story building. The Circle K rental barn is the last public barn in Burbank. Glendale has done a better job of protecting their Rancho heritage. I urge council members to think for themselves.
Thank you for your comment, that's your time. Thank you for your comment, that's your time. Our next speaker is Mark Atherley, followed by James Ingram.
Hi, thank you, Mark Atherley, Burbank resident, Riverside Drive. The fact that this condo development proposal is attempted to sneak in via the SB 35 statute, which I understand is questionable in itself, in an area that is simply not equipped to handle the sheer scale of the development being proposed, should quite simply be rejected by the council and reconsidered for a more appropriate part of town. There are times you need to look at a development as a whole, and not just based on the technicalities of what eligibility's and laws have been followed or requirements met, but really consider the overall physical location, why the neighborhood resists it so much, and how much it'll be affected during its creation, as well as the effect of hundreds of new people pouring into the neighborhood. There is a reason I can't think of a single yard that doesn't have a Cancel the Condos posting for all to see. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is James Ingram, followed by Darcy Conkle.
Tough crowd. I encourage city council to approve this project. Urban infill housing is one of the most environmentally friendly ways to increase density and provide homeownership opportunities for future residents of the city. Furthermore, I remember a time when another SB 35 project I was assured was illegal. The city lost a lawsuit about that. The city lost funds that could have otherwise gone to capital improvement projects, roads, streets, safety. And I would urge council, if this project goes that far and we lose again, that the cost is passed on to the people that assured us they would win it and it wouldn't cost us. So I encourage the council to approve this project. I think that the developer, I don't have any vested interest in them whatsoever, but it seems to me that they are offering to build some infrastructure that doesn't even exist currently in that neighborhood. So, thanks for the time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Darcy Conkle, followed by Katie Rossi. Let's keep order, we're not going to agree with everybody. Let's allow Darcy her time to speak. Thank you, you're well-prepared. And whenever you, are you ready? Darcy, just put the mic at your level.
Okay. First of all, I want to say, the staff has once again miscategorized the path that is east of the property. It is not part of LAEC. It is part of Griffith Park. So LAEC does not maintain it, so therefore it is open land. Second, in this package, you have received a letter from Miguel Orianda, who is the lead biologist that has done all the studies for P22, and he writes his concern, because that is a wildlife crossing. He gave us pictures of a bobcat on there, and he also gave us pictures of coyotes on there. Another thing is, the Kish Nation, they did not sign that 40-unit condo project. They stated they did not sign it. So that is in there. They said they signed the 30. Also, I want to make note that you can vote no on this, because there is questions on this, and you're not personally responsible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Katie Rossi, followed by Kate Adams.
I want to address the claim that your hands are tied. They're not. One-minute comments are not long enough to lay the facts required, so my request to you is to take all the time that you're allowed to review everything in your inbox, and do not make a determination until you're required to on December 3rd. Also, seek outside counsel. Key facts about land use have been misrepresented or omitted by staff. Decisions based on incomplete or misleading information are not binding. You have information which proves this project does not qualify under SB 35 objective standards. It is lawful of you to deny the application. Do not allow yourselves to be intimidated by people we did not elect, and who are more concerned with liability to big development than the safety of residents. SB 35 does not obligate the council to rubber-stamp flawed determinations. You have the authority and the duty to uphold the law, and refuse to violate the oath you took when you became our council. Your role compels you to deny this application. The city will shield you as an individual, because that's their job. It's not your job to co-sign staff's flawed analyses and avoid liability for the city. It's not your job to be...
Thank you for your comment, that's your time. Our next speaker is Kate Adams, followed by Emily Gabeletti. Kate, when you're ready to start? You've got one minute.
A condo development of this size will greatly threaten the public health and safety of Burbank residents, and does not allow safe access to the historic bridge. You do not have to approve a project that you know will harm the community. According to the data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, a 40-unit building with 89 bedrooms typically generates approximately seven vehicle trips per day per unit, with an additional 17 trips for deliveries, which would equal a grand total of 297 trips per day, that's only counting one vehicle per unit. In and out of one driveway with no ability to turn around, only including 45 parking spots, which is 44 less than the suggested 89 for the 89 bedrooms. Now imagine, 297 cars using a one-lane road that functions as a bridle path with, on average, 167 horses for every three hours. The traffic density and increase, the traffic and density increase of this project of this scale cannot be supported at this specific location.
Thank you for your comment, that's your time. Thank you for your comment, that's your time. That's your time. Kate, that's your time. That's your time. Please respect the system. Our next speaker is Sheila Harmer, followed by Morgan Abscher. And please respect the system, there's a lot, we all get the same amount of time. Obviously not. Please, can I have the next speaker? Sheila Harmer.
So more people show up, so we get less time?
Sheila Harmer. Not seeing Sheila, my next speaker is Morgan Abscher. Oh, sorry, Sheila. Go ahead, Sheila.
Don't move so fast anymore. Okay, 45 parking spaces is a problem. I also want to ask, has anybody in the geological studies compared, looked at any of the earthquake faults? They're building five stories, they're digging out subterranean. Nobody knows? Okay. That's true, but there is one fault that runs right along the river edge and joins with the Hollywood.
She only has a minute, so please let her talk, okay.
Anyway, you've got twice the height limit, twice the density. You've got at least twice, or three times the traffic. We don't need it. We don't need to pay that, and in noise, confusion, any interruptions, it's disgusting. It doesn't even look nice. But it's dangerous, and we have to pay for it. I live on Mariposa Street. I know that street.
Thank you for your comment, Sheila. Our next speaker is Morgan Abscher, followed by Karen Pavlizak.
Hi there, thank you for your time tonight. A safe trail was mentioned many times tonight. However, as also noted, a two-foot-high fence is not safe. A majority of equestrians utilize the road as the safest way to gain access to the Mariposa Bridge. From the current project gate, it's just a few short feet from that bridge. Who is going to pay for accidents that occur from the long construction of this project? Is the developer going to take out an additional liability policy to cover any injuries caused to equestrians, equines, or people from accidents? So, is the city going to pay for that? Is the city willing to undo those costs associated with this risk? It's not if a horse spooks, it's when. Think of the long-term care costs associated with a horse injury. Think of the long-term care costs associated with a horse injury. This is a calculated risk all of us that ride are willing to take on, but we do not consent to the additional risk caused from this project. I solely moved from Minnesota to this neighborhood.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Pavlizak, followed by Steve Starlee.
I want to acknowledge the emotion in the room. It's hard, and you're in a very difficult place. And you hear from council, you hear from constituents, especially legal, about the concerns with SB 35, and those are real. It also sounds like the developer has taken this very personally. And there's almost, this is his reaction to a community that he feels wasn't as supportive as necessary for his ego or for his ideal development. We've heard that it doesn't comply with 75% urban use based on implied inventions. And I would say, take the time, as was stated, to look into that because that means that by the letter of the law, it does not conform. I also want to acknowledge the safety that you know is important, and I want to give you the courage to say, do what it takes. You know this is wrong. I heard you last week when you fought for what you believe is right for Burbank. And this is too big of a profile. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Steve Starlee, followed by Doug Welskopf.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council, members of staff. First, I want to thank you for listening to the neighborhood tonight, and thank you last week for voting for the extension for the master plan of the area. We live on Valley Heart. We move there. Kids ride horses. I want to say the developer did a very smooth job. The issue is, we don't want it. We don't need it. And I'd ask the developer is, why? Why is the neighborhood so completely opposed to this? And why? We need housing, but we don't need it there. We don't need to destroy a neighborhood just to put housing in another neighborhood. It's true, we need to do something in Burbank, but not there. It's not the right project, and the neighborhood doesn't want it. And I encourage the council to reject the project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Doug Welskopf, followed by Gero Mangiakian.
What we've seen in Burbank for far too many years is a case of the tail wagging the horse and how the Rancho equestrians have been able to get their way in everything they've demanded from our city council. And they're here this evening demanding that you not permit homes to be built at 910 South Mariposa in order to preserve what they consider their absolute right to resist any changes that would benefit the entire Burbank community, just as they stopped 24 homes from being built in 2017 at 814 South Mariposa. I believe the council, the council did in 2017 by stopping the building of nice new neighborhood with 24 desperately needed additional homes in Burbank. Fifteen percent that would have been set aside for low-income applicants and all contributing property taxes to helping balance our longstanding budget deficit can only be described as a tragic blunder, which I hope the current city council doesn't repeat. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Gero Mangiakian, followed by Lisa Dyson.
The American Association of Equine Practitioners state, and I quote, "Research has shown that horses in urban settings adapt easily to their surroundings." A study at the University of Life Sciences in Lublin, Poland, assessed the behavioral and psychological response of horses to various sounds. The weakest response was related to human-made sounds. In their study, a railway engine, plane, and lawnmower produced no response, while sounds of a dog, cat, and wind produced a threat response. In the last four years, has the opposition provided any evidence, such as expert testimony from published studies or peer-reviewed research showing that this project poses a genuine risk?
Madam City Clerk, can you please pause his time? Can you please pause his time? I've asked you several times, please let's not speak over anybody who's talking, regardless of what their point of view is. Everybody gets a minute. Let's give him back some time. And please, the more you all laugh, the more we make noise, the harder it is to get through it. He's allowed to speak. This is America. Everybody has a right to speak. Let him speak. You have one minute, sir. Please go ahead.
Okay. So showing that this project poses a genuine risk to horse safety, if not, the claims remain speculative and unsupported by scientific data. The Rancho horses have already shown adaptability to large-scale, sudden, noisy, and vibration-heavy construction, as they've made numerous trips within 100 feet of Headworks. The Headworks construction dwarfs the project discussed today and includes a centuries' work of deep excavation, earthmoving for spreading grounds, and more recently, building a large, deeply embedded structures for the Headworks water complex. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Lisa Dyson, followed by Paul Dyson. Please. Our next speaker is Lisa Dyson, followed by Paul Dyson.
I'm asking you to not approve the revised proposal for 910 South Mariposa. If you do approve it, the city needs to be prepared for an onslaught of lawsuits, given that the city will be liable for injuries that may occur during the construction and occupation of this high-density project. The situation of this project is a personal injury attorney's dream. The road leading up to this project is very narrow, and it is wholly inadequate to handle the volume of traffic that construction and occupation will cause. In addition, 45 planned parking spaces is not enough parking for 40 units. How many households in multi-bedroom dwellings have only one automobile? Not very many, and there's no public transportation anywhere near this project. This high-density project is incredibly inappropriate for this location. Please deny the revised proposal.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Paul Dyson, followed by Tony Shimilino.
Paul Dyson, Burbank Rancho resident. Question, would you be proud of this if it were built? Would you take people down there to show it to them and say, this is how we do things in Burbank? This is a great location for this kind of project? Would you do that? This destroys the neighborhood. It's a catastrophe, and it's an embarrassment to the city because it's in such a badly, bad place that nobody, when I first heard about it, I thought, really did think it was a joke, that somebody wants to build five stories on that corner down there. Quite extraordinary. So think about it. Would you put this in a brochure to advertise how good the city of Burbank is at taking care of its neighborhoods and of sensible planning? Think about that. I don't think you would.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Tony Shimilino, followed by Mercedes Cooper.
Good evening. I listened to the entire staff report, and nowhere in there was the word horses mentioned. I don't think the horse activity of this very narrow triangle was being considered. And I would like to point out that the bridge, the 70-year-old national historical registered bridge, is the fulcrum of a big funnel of horses that come from the Glendale Rancho, from the Burbank Rancho, from the Equestrian Center, from all the rental stables. They all converge on this one point. So the maps and the diagrams that were shown really show maybe a one- or two-block zone around that area. But you have to think of a much larger area that is coming to a fulcrum, and I urge you to not approve this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Mercedes Cooper, followed by Louis Altobelli. Mercedes Cooper.
Actually, the next number.
No worries. Hold your card for the next item. Louis Altobelli, followed by Samuel Brown Vasquez.
Good evening, council. Louis Altobelli, I live in Rancho. Normally, when it comes to projects like this, which they do happen in the Rancho, my wife would have been up here. Unfortunately, she passed away in 2023. But I'll still try to represent her here. You know, the one thing she said about the Headworks project that the guy just mentioned, whenever she was with riders, she was an equestrian, and when the guys operating the equipment were instructed to stop, they were not allowed. Once they witnessed a horse, they had to stop, wait for the horses to go through, then they could continue to work. So the horses didn't completely get used to it. These guys were under instruction to be well aware of this. You know, when I first heard this, too, it seemed a little ridiculous. Five stories? It just doesn't quite fit over a residential neighborhood. It seems a bit ridiculous. The mentions about SB 35 and the exact details that not matching the law.
Thank you for your comment.
I think that's what we looked into. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Samuel Brown Vasquez.
Good evening. SB 35, as you've heard from multiple people, is a flawed law. It's effectively held this city council hostage. But your lawyers are going to tell you that you're obligated to follow the law. And they're going to say that you're going to get threatened, they're going to threaten you guys and say that you're going to get sued. But your lawyer should also have the requirement to disclose to you that you can also get sued by us for violations of SEQA, for violations of the Clean Air Act, for violations of the Clean Water Act, and for violations of Title VI, the Civil Rights Act. Because what you're doing is displacing the workers, the immigrant workers that are part of this community. I don't believe proper noticing was conducted to make sure to inform this community of this hearing tonight, and I think the outreach has been abysmal. But you have the most greedy corporate developer holding you guys hostage. That's not right.
Thank you for your comment. Those, those are all my public comment cards. Did we? That's what I did. Apologies for former Mayor Gableddy. I have your card right here. Please go ahead.
Before I start, I'd like to be sure that the slides are up. I don't know how to operate this, so I'm going to ask the clerk to show me what to I pointed at the laptop. And what do I do? Okay. Oh, good, it's up. The lot has natural habitat, as shown in the darker image up here, and it's adjacent to natural habitat. That is outside the fence line upon which the new biologists based their evaluation. This area is not graded or divided of a habitat pursuant to SB 35. The new biologists looked at this, but they did not look at the habitat beyond the fence. This renders their work invalid pursuant to SB 35. The arborist identified an elderberry with 35-foot-wide canopy on the property line according to the developer's own survey. Dr. Cooper's arrow pointed to the two elderberries, and you could see it. These elderberries were in existence until the large elderberry had its branch cut off on April 10th, 2024. Damage like this can degrade and eliminates potential to propagate, just as the new biologists said, unable to regenerate due to the level of disturbance. That disturbance was caused by the developer's own person on the lot itself.
Thank you for your comment. Madam City Clerk, an apologies, former Mayor Gableddy, for losing your card. Thank you for speaking. I was actually surprised. I was like, there's no way she's not speaking. All right, do we have any callers on the line? We do. All right, let's bring them in.
The first caller is Kathleen Ewing.
Hi. Quick sidebar. I agree with the woman who spoke earlier about the other cities that develop projects under SB 35. What studies have been done to ensure our city won't be ruined five years after the earth has turned? If this project is executed, what has been done to ensure adequate emergency response to fire? How about parking? Forty-five units with one parking space each? We know most couple owns two cars, making overflow parking naturally directed to surrounding streets. This isn't counting gas. This all sounds like a huge safety nightmare. I am vehemently opposed to this project, as the project favors a predatory developer who sees an opportunity to build a highly profitable project under the guise of SB 35. The developer's speaking for 15 minutes, telling us he originally offered us a smaller development, and now is left with no choice but to go to the mount with a high-density unit because we oppose the negative effects this project will bring. You can understand why the community is clearly upset. We are counting on you, city council, to listen to our concerns, read our comments and studies, do your own duty of protecting the interests of residents, not oppressing the developers.
Thank you for your comment. That's your time.
The next caller is Samantha Russell.
Hi, you're on with city council.
Hi, good evening. I'm calling today to urge you to deny the approval of the Mariposa development. The project not only fails to meet SB 35's eligibility requirements, but it also poses serious risks to our community's safety, heritage, and environment. The development is located 53 feet from the historic Mariposa Street Bridge, which is a vital equestrian link to Griffiths Park. And the five-story structure would destroy the integrity of this landmark and irreparably harm the equestrian culture that defines the Rancho. Horses are sensitive creatures. Despite what you've heard from that caller or that speaker, they're deeply attuned to their environment. The stress of constant noise, increased traffic, and unpredictability of people who don't understand how to live around horses would jeopardize their health and safety. And a sudden influx of residents so close to an equestrian community would cause unnecessary actions for horses, riders, and the public. This is not just a neighborhood. It's a living, breathing piece of Los Angeles history. And as the city grows more uniform, expensive, and detached from its roots, this community stands as a reminder of what makes LA truly unique, and we cannot afford to let that slip away. Additionally, the rest of the political establishment.
Thank you for your comment. That's your time. Thank you for your comment.
The next caller is Colleen Stratton. Hi, Colleen. You're on with the city council. You have one minute.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I have boarded my horse in the Rancho area for around 30 years. And at one point, I used to board my horse in a backyard barn that was across Riverside Drive. In order to get to the historic bridge, which was the only way I could ride my horse, I needed to cross Riverside Drive, walk down Mariposa Street, which is an incredibly narrow, one-lane street. My horse was required to rock, to walk in the street, couldn't walk on the sidewalk. And on multiple occasions, my horse was almost hit by a car. The car would race down that street, and it was very narrow. This is a game, that's one thing that you're not taking into consideration. It isn't just by the bridge. It's the entire Mariposa Street that is very dangerous with the excess traffic. It's going to be an accident waiting to happen. I urge you to vote no.
Thank you for your comment.
The next caller is Samantha Kirkaby. Hi, Samantha. You're on with the city council. You have one minute.
Hi. Nearly every California Fire Department website mentions the severe and catastrophic impact of climate change on our state with respect to wildfires. They also all mention the fact that fire zones are rapidly changing in California. LA Mayor Karen Bass's website, under Fire Hazard Severity Zones, says, quote, "CalFire is currently remapping fire hazard severity zones for state responsibility areas and very high fire hazard severity zones recommendations in local responsibility areas to provide updated map zones based on new data, science, and technology." Burbank citizens deserve the same amount of research into our rapidly changing fire zones as our sister city, LA. The Mariposa site is directly next to Griffiths Park, which the LA Fire Department website refers to as a very high fire hazard severity zone. I propose that before any final decisions are made by councils at Burbank Fire in conjunction with CalFire, assess if local fire zones have adjusted with respect to climate change and provide an accurate current evaluation of the Mariposa site prior to.
Thank you for your comment. That's your time.
The next caller is Laurel LaRoca. Hi, you're on with the city council. You have one minute.
Good evening. I urge you to vote against the Mariposa project being constructed. Mariposa Street Bridge and surrounding trails are vital to the Burbank Rancho and Griffiths Park areas. The bridge is located just around 50 feet from the proposed site and the only crossing point over the river. It was specifically chosen and designed due to the proximity of the Griffiths Park trail. This is a massive five-story project. Construction activities threaten both the safety of the bridge and the accessibility of nearby trails and streets. Loud noises and heavy traffic may cause unpredictable reactions in horses, increasing the likelihood of accidents. Tepperary closures of trails and roads and obstructions caused by vehicles and building materials would leave users with no viable alternatives and further exacerbate safety concerns. I understand the city is determined to build more housing, but there are other, more viable and safer locations for this project. The changes to our traffic patterns in the neighborhood will have lasting negative impact. I urge you to vote against this project.
Thank you for your comment. That's your time. Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment.
The next caller is Sue Clearman.
Hi, Sue, you're on with the city council. You have one minute.
Good evening. I urge you to deny the Development Director's recommendation for the Mariposa project. This project is huge and fails to meet objective standards and requirements of the general plan zoning design review in SB 35. According to the plans, the height of the Mariposa project is over 64 feet tall from the sidewalk. As a point of reference, this is comparable to the First Street project, which measures 66 feet from the sidewalk. Just picture looking up at the First Street project across from the AMC Theater. This is how high the Mariposa project will be. The Mariposa project is not near a transit hub nor bus line. The project is immediately adjacent to equestrian trails and bridge leading into Griffiths Park. Even bicycles are prohibited on these trails. I urge you, do not approve the extreme Mariposa project as proposed. We need real, objective environmental studies. And note, there are numerous incomplete and inaccurate findings in the staff report...
Thank you for your comment. That's your time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any other callers?
We had one more, but they dropped, and they haven't called back, so we're done.
Okay. Seeing no more callers and receiving no more public comment, I just want to note for the record that we have some folks who completed comment cards but do not wish to speak. Cynthia Cobb wishes to share her opposition. Diane Bernard, also sharing opposition. Christie Blackman, apologies if I butcher your name, also sharing opposition. James Franken, also opposition. Sarah Summerfield, opposition. And Madeline Muñoz Sapat, opposition. And that is all the public speakers and comment cards in the record. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. All right, there being no further public comment, I now declare the public hearing public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Services Department like to make any further comments responding to the public comment?
You mean the Community Development Department? Just wanted, okay, yes. I'm open for questions.
Would any staff like to respond to the public comment?
Sure. Scott Planback, Planning Manager, just a couple of responses to some of the comments. First, I want to respond to a comment made by the applicant saying that the state's requiring us to build 12,000 units. Actually, in our housing element, we're required to provide housing for 8,772 units. The 12,000 units referenced by the applicant's actually a council goal to be built 12,000 units by year 2035, so just want to clarify that. The next thing, I just wanted to, there was comments made that the sewer might be strained. We did have a sewer analysis done by our sewer department saying that there is capacity for sewer.
So for the comment about the habitat, sorry, Joseph Onobuchi, Associate Planner. So for the comment about the habitat, I'll just say that SB 35 requires us to look at site-specific conditions only. We cannot look at other conditions outside of the site property. So I just wanted to respond to that comment. I think there were a few other comments about the northern portion, or sorry, the site that bounds the property to the north. This is Applied Invention. And so I just wanted to say that, as with the first project, staff identified this as an office use, which is a permitted use in the M2 Zone. And city records indicate that the business located at 820 South Mariposa Street is a general office use, and that business has been in operation since it moved to this location in 2017. And so the current business license on file describes Applied Invention as a multidisciplinary company that designs, builds, and develops technology solutions in partnership with leading companies and entrepreneurs. It goes on to say that they are an interdisciplinary group of engineers, scientists, and artists with skills in a number of different areas, including electronics, mechanics, physics, biology, industrial design, mathematics, software development, systems engineering. And so as I mentioned in the staff report, staff use the North American Industry Classification System as an additional reference point to provide further clarity on that use. So for background, the NASICS system is a system used by the U.S. federal statistical agencies to classify businesses by industry. And the company's own LinkedIn page describes the industry that they are in as IT services and IT consulting. So IT services under the NASICS code, classification system is under the 554 sector, or 54 sector, which is a two-digit sector code that applies to professional, scientific, and technical services. So I just want to say that I know that there's been some discussion about the northern section of the property, and this is how staff arrived at our determination that the site was commercial.
Madam Vice Mayor, if I could supplement Mr. Onobuchi's response. SB 35, which is codified in Government Code Section 65913.4, nowhere in that section does the word "industrial" appear. There's no prohibition on "industrial." There's no reference to proportions of "industrial." Had the legislature wished to prohibit "industrial" or set a ratio for "industrial," they could have, they would have. If we look to AB 2011, AB 2011 actually does reference industrial uses, and they put a limit at, an urban use shall not include more than one-third "industrial." You cannot assert that the legislature meant to prohibit something if they have in another statute and they chose not to do so here. So the industrial use, staff within their discretion used a reasonable inquiry to identify that there's a commercial use, but the fact that any portion of it may also be industrial is not a fatal flaw. SB 35, Government Code Section 65913.4, is silent on "industrial," and staff has made a reasonable inquiry. With regard to numerous comments about the road constraint and the illustrative video of a fire engine trying to get around a truck, that's what the current condition, as the applicant identified. They are providing a 37-foot dedication, which will add a new travel lane, a new pedestrian lane, a new equestrian lane, in addition to landscape. So the condition displayed is not the condition of the project. That is certainly a fair share for the developer to dedicate their frontage and improve their frontage, and we would not require more than that of them. With regard to an assertion of Clean Air Act lawsuit, Clean Water Act lawsuit, Civil Rights lawsuit, and SEQA lawsuit, I would say there are no merits at this time to any such lawsuits against the city. But we are, staff report is replete with information about the obligations under SB 35 and Government Code Section 65913.4.
Scott Planback, Planning Manager, just to add to that regarding servicing the site with, for the Fire Department Fire, we worked very closely, the applicant and staff worked very closely with the Fire Department to make sure that the site could be served. And this includes having Hammerhead on site, so there's adequate turnaround for the Fire Department to service the site if they need to offer any sort of calls on the site.
Also, I'd like to add as an additional discussion on the habitat question. So I'll just say that staff originally flagged this item as part of the incomplete letter that was sent out to the applicant on July 1st, 2024. And so the biologist's report submitted in response to the incomplete letter stated that the biologist did not identify any habitat for sensitive species on the property and states that none are expected to occur. And so the biologist's report was peer-reviewed by an independent consultant hired by the city and returned findings that were consistent with the original biologist's report. So those are included as Attachment 9, Exhibit A to the staff report. And the peer review, just to lay it out a little further, the peer review concluded that there is presumably little or no potential for substantive wildlife movement on the project site due to the highly disturbed nature of the project site and immediate vicinity. That's in regard to the habitat again. I think there were also some comments about an earthquake fault line, so I'll just respond to that. The project site is not located within a delineated earthquake fault zone as determined by the state geologist in any official maps that are published by the state geologist. And that's in Exhibit E of Attachment 1, I believe. We're also requiring a geologist, or sorry, a geotechnical report. And then, of course, Condition 74 under the Building Division, that's all, we require all projects to comply with Title IX, Chapter 1 of the Burbank Municipal Code, and the California Building Code, California Residential Code, and California Electrical Code, and numerous others to make sure that the building will be safe and can be occupied.
Madam Vice Mayor, on the issue of habitat, I'd like to focus in on the actual requirement relating to habitat. In SB 35, Government Code Section 65913.4, A6I and J provide the requirements. I specifically identifies the property, the land would be ineligible if the land is identified for conservation in an adopted natural community conservation's plan, which it is not. There is no NCCP for this area, so that does not apply. The second item, J, is that the site itself is habitat for protected species. As Mr. Onobuchi indicated, we required the applicant to provide a biologist's report. The applicant also paid for the city to hire one of our respected consultants to peer-review that, and they agreed with the findings.
Sorry, the last, the last thing that I'll say here is, I know there were comments about parking. They're providing 45 parking spaces. Under SB 35 law, they're only required to provide one per unit, and they're providing five over the required amount, so I just wanted to make sure that was in the record.
I believe we have another couple comments.
Good evening, council members. That was actually my comment. Lisa Currihara, Senior Assistant City Attorney. Regarding parking, SB 35 only allows us to require one parking space per unit.
Thank you. And then I see Mr. Ramirez, who wants to make a comment.
Just want to make sure, I know there was a lot of questions regarding safety, fire access, and questions regarding conducting additional analysis. And as you recall from SB 35 discussions we've had in the past, it's SEQA exempt, and we're not required or allowed to ask the developer to provide any additional technical studies beyond what's required in the law, as far as the regulations that we currently have. However, we do conduct what we call interdepartmental review of all projects. Unfortunately, we have a 60-day window to complete that effort, and we've brought it to you within 45 days of when it's actually, we completed the majority of our effort. And as you saw, I apologize, we've had some updates and amendments, but that's what happens when you're rushed to do it within the shot clocks, which, by the way, will be reduced to 30 days starting in January of this coming year. But I wanted to note that those particular issues that would otherwise have been brought up during SEQA analysis is something that we cannot do under the current SB regulation. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of it. But it did get the review necessary from Fire and PD when it comes to emergency services, as well as the other utilities looked at it to be able to provide service to the location as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Are there any other comments or responses from staff? All right, seeing none. Now, as required by the hearing, does the applicant or the representative wish to make any further comments? You have a maximum of 10 minutes for rebuttal.
So while the applicant is coming up here, applicant's council's coming up here, I would like to clearly state that the applicant is afforded time because it is their due process right to have their application considered by a fair-minded hearing body, and that's why they're given time.
I also, before the applicant begins, I do want to remind folks in the crowd, I've had to pause you several times and had to bring this meeting to order several times. And Government Code Section 54957.95 authorizes the mayor, the vice mayor, or any chairing person in this body to restore order to the meetings in the event of an actual disruption that are disturbing, disrupting, or impeding us from conducting city business. Please don't make me go there. I want this hearing to happen. I want you all to hear what folks have to say. I know we don't all agree with anything that's happening. It's a frustrating process for all of us, but let's not add to it. Let's get through it, and let's make sure that everybody has a chance to speak. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Good evening, council members, members of the staff. My name is Dave Rand. I'm a land use attorney representing Butterfly Gardens, the applicant. I will be far briefer than 10 minutes. Just a couple of points to add in response to some of the technical things raised tonight by public comment. First, with respect to the issue of urban uses that got a fair bit of attention tonight, I'd like to call the council's intention to a letter our firm sent this council a few days ago, supplementing the information that was already in the record, which already substantiated the fact that Applied Invention is a commercial use, and the surrounding properties do meet the 75% urban uses criteria. We provided additional documentation, including documentation related to the 2017 business license from Applied Invention that referred to the existing use as, quote, "a grandfather general office use," end quote. We provided prior certificates of occupancy and permits related to the property that referred to the use and the structure that exists today as, quote, "an office building," end quote, and a, quote, "commercial use," end quote. That supplements the codes from the NAICS that staff referenced and much other documentation, voluminous documentation, confirming that that eligibility requirement is in fact satisfied. There were concerns raised. We heard about some infrastructure-related issues and geotechnical-related issues. I'd call your attention to the almost 200 conditions of approval that are attached to the resolution you'll be adopting tonight, many of which address these issues like requiring sewer capacity analysis, requiring sewer upgrades if they were needed, requiring geotechnical reports and fault study analyses that will be submitted as part of the plan check process and required before any building permits can be issued for this project. I fully appreciate the difficult job that this council has and the complexity around these issues. A lot has been talked about following the law tonight. I will end by just quoting you a portion of the law that is at issue this evening, SB 35. It's one of the last portions of the statute, but probably the most important. It says, "This section shall be interpreted and implemented in a manner to afford the fullest possible weight to the approval and the provision of increased housing supply." Section 65913.4N under SB 35 prior to SB 423. What that instructs council members is amongst all this that you're hearing, the lens through which you look at this is how to increase housing supply, how to find SB 35 eligibility, and we hope that will be your vote this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, council members, are there any questions for staff?
I have a couple of questions. The speakers mentioned, and we also received emails inquiring about it, which is the approval from the tribe. I know there was, I see in the attachments, there were letters sent to them, but I heard some of the speakers talk about, and the agreement was not signed. And then also, we received a couple of emails indicating the agreements needed to be signed. Can you clarify that for us?
Yes, I can clarify, I mean, the agreement. So we have them in Attachment, I believe it's Attachment 2, where we reached out to the tribes to let them know that this SB 35 project was taking place. They responded to us, and we, within the time period allowed, we were able to come to enforceable agreements with both responding tribes. I believe the tribe in question that is, that we're talking about here is Gabriellino. Is that correct? If so, we do have the signatures here. I can provide that for council if they would like. But we have all the signatures, both mine, the chairman, and then our directors and the city attorney.
Is it in the attachment in the report, or you received that after the fact?
No, we have it here. I mean, it is in the report, but I don't know if there was maybe the, I don't know if it just got...
Can you tell us where in the report? I'm looking at Attachment 2, Exhibit A11.
Attachment 2, so there's a, it's a combination. So yeah, I feel like it might have gotten washed out, and the chairman's, the chairman's signature might have gotten washed out, but I have, there you go.
What's the attachment at the bottom, just so we can see the washed out part?
A6, sorry.
We've got, we've got a fully signed copy. It's not the version in the book.
Okay, because I'm looking at...
Madam Vice Mayor, the question is about the signature on the Kis Nation Tribal Enforceable Agreement. The version in the staff report has their notation. We had just negotiated that version, and they have a notation, but this is the fully signed version in, looks like the wet-signed version that Mr. Onobuchi has. It has the same notation, but it has more signatures.
And this isn't, this is in the record?
It's in the record, but not with all those signatures.
Okay, so it will be put in the record, though?
Yes.
Yes, and this is the reason, I believe, why there was a question for Attachment 2, Exhibit A... Exhibit A, A-6. They were indicating that it was not signed, and this is for the 40 units, not the 30 units, correct, staff? This was for the 40 units?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we had come to an initial agreement when the applicant, during the NOI phase, which is usually when the enforceable agreement process is determined. And then after the NOI, the applicant increased the unit count for the project, and so we reached out to the two tribes to ask if they wanted to amend their enforceable agreement. We have an amended enforceable agreement from the other tribe, the Fernandino Band of Mission Indians. And then we have an email, so if you keep scrolling on that attachment, it's the last, I think it's, what page is that, Attachment A10, you'll see the response from Chairman Salas, letting us know that they did not desire to update their enforceable agreement, and they wanted to keep the signed enforceable agreement that referred to the NOI in place. And so that's why we included that email, just to clear up any confusion.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have, it's in regards to the bridge. And I know we've also received some emails, some concerns in regards to, with the bridge withstand the subterranean construction for the building? So with the digging, with all the construction that would be taking place, have we looked at perhaps hiring an engineer? Are we going to be looking at that? Is this something that we're going to be looking at as far as consideration to see if that would stand it or not?
Scott Plan, Plan Manager. So what we asked for, we asked for geotechnical reports for the project site. We do have old reports for the bridge itself, but as a condition of approval for this project, we have not asked for additional studies because it's off-site, and we can't request those studies for additional studies for the bridge as a result of this project.
So, if I may, Vice Mayor. So the studies that you would be requesting, if you wanted us to look at the bridge now, it's a city bridge, it's designated as a historic landmark, and there have been assessments that have been done by LA County engineering staff, and that information, I believe, is available with our Public Works Department. So if there's any issues with maintenance or future improvements that are required as part of that, that would be an effort that we would have to undertake as a city to look at its current integrity. I believe it allows for up to five horses to cross it any one time, and so that's the kind of level of effort that we would have to look at, but it would have to be on the city's effort, not on that of the applicant.
Correct. So I'm referring to our efforts to see, you know, whether it's during the project, before the project, are we planning on doing it, or this is something that we can look into and make sure, first of all, the safety of the bridge?
Yeah, it would, I'm sorry to cut you off.
That's okay. No, no, I'm listening.
I know historically you looked at some discussion in the past regarding potential mitigation measures for equine construction, and we looked at the fact that those weren't applicable to the project, per se, but they were things that the city may entertain and may want to incur the cost to undertake those efforts, some of which don't require access to the property and other things. If the bridge is one of those things that the council majority so desires, then it's an issue of agendizing and providing direction to our colleagues at Public Works to look at that city facility and look at it, whether it needs to be on the CIP project, and to see its long-term sustainability as a resource.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez.
Councilor Mullins, if I might ask a quick follow-up since we're on the bridge? Just want to be clear. I know the bridge was newly designated with the national historic status. Does that come into any interplay with SB 35?
No, the limitations on SB 35 is if the property itself were to be designated as historic, then that would impact it, but adjacent properties, bridge, you know, down the street, those do not have the effect of, in other words, negating the processing of the SB 35 application.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilor Mullins, continue.
Oh, thank you. Also, the timing of the street widening, is that, I know we talked about the applicant, and I think in the presentation, that the frame of work, and I think it was on Slide number three, we're proposing the street widening. Is this something that's going to happen prior to the project starting or after the project starting? So this would address some of the safety issues and concerns that were raised tonight.
Scott Plan, Plan Manager. Typically, the street improvements are done after, it's post, after the building permits are issued and the project's under construction. The public improvements are usually completed after, and then the project typically, and the improvements are completed at the same time. So the project first is constructed, and then the improvements in the street are constructed.
If I may, Vice Mayor Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director of Plan, I apologize, I don't think I acknowledged who I was last time, but...
I kind of recognized who you were.
Yeah, I know, I know.
We had a halfway acknowledgement, so thank you for completing this.
Well, sometimes, you know, the city attorney and I might get confused, but that's a whole different issue. So I just wanted to clarify, during construction, there is a construction management plan that has to be undertaken, so that when they're actually bringing construction vehicles to the site, staging them, exiting the site, they have things like flagmen, people that are actually monitoring for vehicular traffic to and from. So they are going to have to make certain, incorporate certain requirements upfront during construction activity, but the actual physical improvements to actually widen the property, as you see in front of Pickwick, where they still haven't put the horse trail in, the sidewalks, that happens typically towards the end of the project. Once pretty much the interior space is fully completed, then they make those improvements at the rear, because what you don't want to have happen is put those improvements in, and then those have to be damaged by, you know, large construction vehicles or other activities. So yes, it happens towards the end. However, a lot of the things addressed to ensuring that they're not blocking traffic, that they're not impeding emergency vehicles to and from the site, or even to the site itself, that all is, has to be incorporated into, like their truck routes, their construction management plan, and that is incorporated upon issuance of permits.
Thank you. And if I may just continue with the question, last time we discussed the previous project, the first project, we also discussed in length about some street improvement and traffic mitigation to help ease the congestion during the construction. And then also, we talked about a sound wall, we talked about protection during the construction phase. Is this carry, are we, do you need us to start the discussion again in regards to what we do in the event the project is approved, and we moving forward in protecting the neighborhood?
So those are, if you recall, I believe in October of last year, there was a report that was presented to council, actually, my colleague, Mr. Onobuchi, presented it regarding potential construction measures and best practices for construction around equine. And of those, we identified a large group of potential things that could be done outside the perimeter of the property. They had costs, estimates, very, very kind of rough estimates, and there was also some discussion about actually accessing the properties and incorporating things like sound blankets and other types of obstructions to limit views for the horses and the sound. But as you recall, those were things that we could volunteer to the applicant, but in essence, we would still incur the cost to undertake those things, and that's kind of where we left off. We didn't go any further than that. You're kind of in a similar position here, is it's not something that is a standard condition of approval for the project. It's not an objective standard, but if the council so desires to give direction as part of a future action, we can approach the developer, but the consideration would have to be looked at, and I would encourage you for us to bring back things so that you can then look at them and know what the costs are, because in essence, the city would be incurring the cost unless the developer is going to volunteer to undertake some of that work.
Yeah, absolutely, and I recall that conversation, even though it was almost, well, a little over a year ago, but, and I do apologize, I said sound wall and it's a sound blanket, it's a whole different blanket versus wall. But that is something, I know we discussed in the first project, that's something I'm interested to further discuss for this project as well. And I do want to touch with the city attorney, and you brought something that I haven't heard before, perhaps, is the industrial use is not prohibited under SB 35. And if I heard you correctly, because from a lot of the emails that we received and a lot of conversation, it was that we've had with community members, it was, you cannot build in the site because, we can't do it because of next adjacent property is industrial, which to believe to be industrial versus what staff is saying it's commercial. So is this something...
Councilmember Mullins, if I may?
Yes.
Lisa Curi-Hara, Senior Assistant City Attorney. So I, it's getting into the legal weeds, but I can read the law for you. And essentially, what SB 35 requires is that at least 75% of the perimeter of the project site must adjoining parcels that are developed with urban uses. And then SB 35 goes on to define what qualifies as an urban use, and they list any current or former residential, commercial, public, institutional transit, or transportation passenger facility, or retail use, or any combination of those uses. So if any of those uses are on adjoining parcels, it will count towards the 75% perimeter requirement. SB 35 doesn't prohibit an industrial use on an adjacent parcel if that adjacent parcel also has a qualifying urban use. If you look at bills like AB 2011, there is an explicit prohibition on site eligibility if a project is adjacent to a parcel that has a certain amount of industrial use on it. So under AB 2011, 75% of the project perimeter has to be adjoined by parcels within urban use, and none of the adjoining sites can include more than a third of the square footage on the site dedicated to industrial use. That prohibition is not in SB 35. So to the extent that the parcel to the north of the project site, applied inventions, has some commercial use on the site, it will qualify under the letter of the law as meeting the 75% of the perimeter, contributing towards that 75% of the perimeter requirement.
Thank you. I do want to also acknowledge the updates that took place, and thank you to staff after our discussion regarding the attachment we just received today, the amended attachment, because it did provide, just for the sake of the public that did not get a copy of it, a lot of the findings on original attachment, I believe, one, had a lot of inconsistency with what the report had reflected, and I do appreciate the updates that staff made to show that a lot of this inconsistency were actually corrected and/or have been included in the staff report to give the additional information. So it is an important amendment to our discussion.
Madam Vice Mayor, I would say all. I reviewed it against my notes from the prior version, and it appears all of the inconsistencies were corrected with the notations, back to the conditions of approval or plan check submittals.
Thank you for that. Those are my questions right now, so allow for others to go.
Councilwoman Anthony?
Yeah, could I just have a follow-up? When were all of these corrections made? Was this recent?
Well, the changes to the plans, and actually, staff could probably better respond to this, but I'm already talking. The changes to the plans have been done over time for at least the last 22 days. I think some of the things were submitted on November the 4th. But the chart wasn't updated, so it appears it was a working chart, and it didn't get updated at the time the full package was submitted, and staff went through today and generated the corrections on the comparison chart, and I'll let them pick up from there.
So we received the formal submission on October 4th, 2024. We reviewed it according to, with, according to our consistency matrix. So we have a consistency matrix that we use, think of it as like a checkbox, that we use to make sure that it's meeting the standards and the applicable standards for the zoning ordinance. And so we returned those comments after our initial review. We returned those comments to the applicant, letting them know what was consistent and what was not consistent. And so that's what you're seeing, that's what was uploaded to the website. And so on November 8th, even though the plans are dated November 7th, but we received the resubmital on November 8th, and those, that resubmital addressed the inconsistencies that we had brought up in that original consistency matrix. And so what we did today, for clarity, was just update the consistency matrix so we can, so it shows that, sorry, I lost my train of thought. So what we did was update the consistency matrix so that it's clear and shows that the application now meets all of the objective standards, either on the plan set or by conditions of approval. And this is, we're permitted to do this under BMC Section 10-1-19302B3, which states that if an application can be brought into compliance with minor changes to the proposal, the city in lieu of making detailed findings will allow the applicant to correct any deficiencies within the 60-day timeframe. So, yeah, so we worked with the applicant to address the flagged items, and that's just to further bolster what the city attorney was saying.
My question is about the 60-day timeframe. You didn't need to have all of that done by today. Technically, you needed to have all of those inconsistencies done by December 2nd, is that correct?
December 3rd would be the 60-day, yes.
But the problem arises where you needed to find a public hearing to be able to agendize it and bring it to us, so you were on a shorter shot clock than the 60 days.
The 45 days that our director mentioned earlier, yes.
Okay. I wanted to just go back to the question of applied invention. They were, that whole area there was built in 2017, or they took an existing structure and repurposed it?
No, it was an existing, the business moved into that building in 2017.
And the zoning there, what's the underlying zoning?
M2, industrial.
M2 industrial.
The entire, this site, as well as that site north and the site south of this project site, is M2.
Okay. Applied invention. When they moved in, they didn't have to, was it by right?
Yes, it was considered general office, so, yes, considered general office.
So under their application process at the time, it was just commercial use? They could go in, M2, and do their work? They didn't need approval, CUP, none of that stuff?
Sorry, my mistake, M1, sorry.
M1, okay. So is that correct? They could just go in by right?
Yes, they could go in by right. No CUP approval, anything like that, no, they just needed to...
Okay. When was SB 35 signed into law? Do we know what year that was?
2017.
2017.
2017. And when was AB 2011 signed into law?
2020 or 2021.
So after, okay. And that's the one where they added in industrial? Interesting, okay. When we talk about urban use, just in general, I know we have a bunch of places that we can go to get descriptions on what is urban, what is industrial, what is commercial. Are there, are there places where there's industrial use that's not considered urban use? Because what's the other criteria? Rural? I mean, I wouldn't, suburban? Is there a different, like, when we consider urban use in SB 35, is there a non-urban use?
Well, they define it, so you only have to look at the statute.
Right.
They don't preclude industrial, they don't even reference industrial. So you don't need to look someplace else, you just look at the statute.
And then if it's not, is that considered not part of urban use? They don't qualify anything that's not in there? It's only just...
It says, "or any combination thereof."
Okay.
But they don't preclude it, but staff has made a diligent inquiry, and they've provided substantial evidence that it is among the expressly listed urban uses.
Okay. The notice of intent, the original notice of intent was right at the end of December of 2023, but then on July 1st, it was deemed incomplete. Not... Not not disqualified, just incomplete. And so they had to come back and bring more information. What does incomplete mean?
Incomplete means we don't have all the required information that would allow us to make a determination on the consistency with the objective standards.
Under SB thirty five, how long do they have to fill out the completeness after the original notice of intent?
Councilmember Anthony, I am not aware of a of a cutoff period under SB thirty five for them to resubmit.
Okay. So he could just, all right, so he could take his time to complete it.
So the permit streamlining, there's multiple overlapping acts here. The Permit Streamlining Act generally governs the timeframe or the first of all, the contents. So it says we have to publish a list of what a complete application is. It's a protection for the developer that they know what target they're supposed to hit when they provide us everything to review an application. We have thirty days from receipt of an application to determine whether it's complete. SB thirty five doesn't use the term completeness, but that's the process staff uses for every application. They must, within thirty days, provide comments on incompleteness or an application is deemed complete. That runs concurrently with the sixty days under SB thirty five for consistency review. Different terms apply to different things. Completeness is, you know, is the thing in there to review? Not did you review it, not does it, is it consistent with the code? But did they give us the biology report, the geotechnical map? Did they give us the, you know, the preliminary plans, whatever it is? The trouble here is that SB thirty five created an unprecedented short time to review projects. So staff is actually put in the position of having to do both completeness review and consistency review. Thirty days for the first, for the former, sixty days for the second at the same time, but keep the terminology separate so that they don't, you know, because there's actually other requirements that apply. So different statutes, different purposes. And so the completeness review would be under the Permit Streamlining Act to make sure the developer submitted everything that we require for completeness. At the same time, they're already starting the consistency review so they can get that front loaded.
Okay.
Councilmember, do you have other questions?
Yeah, I have just one last question. Someone mentioned earlier eight fourteen Mariposa. Was was that a project that was supposed to be near applied invention or is that back in twenty seventeen?
That was Scott Planback Planning Manager, I can refer to that. There was a proposal to amend the general plan at the time to submit for some single family homes on the site. And that the council at the time declined the proposed general plan amendment and the project did not move forward.
Was that was that on the side of applied invention?
Well, it's, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, and so then instead we got the by right.
Yeah, so in order to develop single family residential in that general plan designation, ran to commercial, they needed a general plan amendment. Our code has a process where an applicant, the council never has to amend its general plan, except for the housing element, except for other mandatory elements. But generally, you don't have to change your land use unless you want to. It's a legislative action. So we have a process that says someone can pay a small application fee and just run that up the flagpole to the council. So they had schematics, they had plans, they had some preliminary subdivision layouts with equestrian units and trails. And the city council declined to consider that general plan amendment.
So the nine ten South Mariposa, that's in the same zoning?
Correct.
M one?
Correct.
So the original application, the earliest one was commercial as well, wasn't it? The Butterfly Guards, the original office space?
The office space that the applicant proposed initially?
Yeah, the original, original verse, first, first version of this. Was that not by right as well, like applied invention was?
There was a process you have to go through. It was a development, what's called development review process to approve a commercial project, a brand new commercial project.
And that didn't apply to applied invention back in twenty seventeen?
Twenty, applied invention moved into an existing building.
Oh, I see, because they didn't have to do any new construction.
Correct.
Excellent. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, I'm done for now.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Takahashi?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. All right, so let's see, the questions that have already been asked, a lot of them were my questions too, so thank you so much for asking them. So let's see. There was a mention by the applicant about the end of SB thirty five stating something about leaning towards leaning towards more housing on the interpretation. Can can we speak to that, what he was quoting at the end?
Yes, it's actually directly in the law. Let me flip to it. So the version of SB thirty five that existed in twenty twenty three when this NOI was submitted, it's six five nine one three point four subsection N. And it says that it is the policy of the state that this section be interpreted and implemented in a manner to afford the fullest possible weight to the interest of and the approval and provision of increased housing supply.
So could you interpret that a little bit in layman's terms of what that means?
So sure, I in, yes. In my opinion, to afford the fullest possible weight to increasing housing supply means that any ambiguity concerning the interpretation of SB thirty five or how it may be implemented should be resolved in favor of approving increased housing on the project site.
Okay, and that was written into SB thirty five?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see. So the process that we're going through tonight, what exactly is our role as city council in this process for an SB thirty five? Are we approving this site tonight or not? What is the role, what is it we're being asked to do in this in this meeting tonight? For clarification?
By the recommendation, you're simply confirming the community development director's determination of consistency. By the words of the statute sixty five nine thirteen point four C, I gotta scroll there, it's a long law. Notwithstanding any local law, if a local government's planning director or equivalent position determines that a development submitted pursuant to the section is consistent with the objective planning standards specified in subdivision A and pursuant to paragraph three of the subdivision, the local government shall approve the development, period. So you have the report. The recommendation is that you confirm the community development director's decision, which has already been issued in the form of the staff report.
Okay, so the SB thirty five consistency has already been determined and we are confirming, confirming or not confirming tonight of that determination?
That's correct.
Okay, and by the law of SB thirty five, we are to do it in a way that if there's any ambiguity, to lean towards more housing. Is that what SB thirty five says?
That appears to be the policy of the state.
Yeah, okay. Does SB thirty five have anything, any, anything in it that allows city council to participate in the determination of whether things are consistent or not?
It did. It no longer does.
Can you expand on that, please?
So the sixty days for consistency review and oversight used to incorporate the city council. The word, the body city council was in the statute until January first of twenty twenty four. The word oversight used to be in the statute. Our process that's codified today is the twenty twenty three, is based on the twenty twenty three version of the law. We have not gone back to change that. So the law's changed. We still have our process. It does not provide for city council approval. In fact, it does not provide for hearings. It's called streamlined ministerial review. If a project meets the code, then as stated in subsection C that I read, local government shall approve the development because it's consistent. It's supposed to be a checks, check the box review. That is essentially what the state did when it preempted our local control.
Okay, and that update, that change happened January first, twenty twenty four?
Yeah, it was a bill adopted in twenty twenty three effective January first.
And remind me again when this plan was submitted?
It was submitted in twenty twenty three, December.
December twenty sixth, twenty twenty three.
Okay. That's interesting. Yeah, go ahead.
Councilwoman Takahashi, you'd be, you'd be okay with Councilwoman Mullins having a follow up?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that's kind of gave me a thought here. If it was submitted in December and the law was effective January twenty twenty four, had we changed or updated our, is it an ordinance or resolution?
It's an ordinance.
An ordinance. Would we have been sitting here tonight listening?
Our recommendation would be that you would have eliminated this review step.
So this process, this point where we at would have never taken place because it would have been approved by the director of planning?
If council would have introduced and adopted that ordinance, which doesn't exist.
Thank you.
Thank. Thank you. All right, so on to some specifics about the project proposal. There were a number of emails and comments that I received about, concerned about an elderberry tree and elderberry trees in the area. And can we get some comments on that, please?
So what I can say is that we again flagged this issue during the review of this project. We told the applicant that it was an incomplete project until we, until we could receive a biologist's report, which we did receive as part of the applicant's submission. And then we peer reviewed that submission or that biologist's report. This was an independent peer review. The developer had nothing to do with it except for having to incur the cost. And so that peer review essentially found that there was no potential for habitat at the site. The elderberry tree, I believe, is off site. There may be a branch that overhangs onto the project site. But as we mentioned earlier, SB thirty five prohibits us from reviewing any off-site issues. We are required to look at site-specific characteristics.
Okay, and are there any elderberry trees on the site itself?
From what the peer review and from the biologist's report, no, there are not.
Okay. And then about the five-story height, does SB thirty five allow for a five-story height projects?
This is a waiver that the applicant requested under California State Density Bonus Law because they are proposing fifteen percent very low income households, or sorry, very fifteen percent very low income units. They are permitted three incentives and additional waivers. And so they chose to use one of their waivers for relief from the requirement for height. As I mentioned in the report, the height requirement under our code would would be forty feet. But because it's less than one hundred and forty nine feet from the R one H property across the street. But because of the bonus density, they are allowed to go up to sixty three point seven. And that is because of the waiver.
Madam, Madam Mayor, if I could add, SB thirty five doesn't care about the height at all. This is an overlay. I mentioned the Permit Streamlining Act. There's also the Density Bonus Law, which is what allows them to get the increased density. SB thirty five is triggered because we didn't build enough housing. Glendale's not subject to SB thirty five. It's triggered because they're building on a site where the general plan allows housing, even though the zoning doesn't. And they're providing the minimum amount of affordable housing necessary to trigger SB thirty five and the wage and labor requirements. All of the extra height en masse comes by combining our code with the Density Bonus Statute. And so the deeper they go in affordability, the more height, the more density they get. We've had projects in town that actually qualified for, I think, unlimited density because they were a hundred percent affordable. It becomes cost prohibitive at some point, but I think we have an SB thirty five project that was seven stories in another part of town. So it's a combination of these laws that really kind of strip us of our control.
And the Density Bonus Law, that's a state level law?
It's a state law with our own local implementing ordinance.
Okay, but it's initiated and determined by the state? That's not us that initiated that density bonus, that that's the state?
That's correct.
Okay. And then for the incentive?
Follow up, I'm sorry.
Really quick, one second. So the incentives, can, you said that they chose to use the height requirement. Can we have any influence on which options they choose for their density bonus?
So we have, I think we have a menu. It's not, I think we've been working for several years on our own density bonus, an update to our density bonus inclusionary. But there's different categories and different numbers they get for different types of affordability. And I would defer to staff on how they implement that.
I can, I can quickly speak to what the state law says. And essentially, for a waiver, the state law says that in no case may a city apply any development standard that would have the effect of physically precluding the construction of the project at the densities and with the incentives and concessions they are entitled to under the State Density Bonus Law. So height in this instance is to accommodate the additional units that they are entitled to under the Density Bonus Increase.
Okay, got it.
And Vice Mayor, if I may add, Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director. So the city attorney mentioned kind of a tiered system of different requests that they can make, incentives, concessions, and waivers. You really have to look at the law as saying they have the right to make the request. In other words, we can't limit their ability to make the request, especially when they're arguing that they need the necessary height to build the, have the envelope to build the units that they're entitled under the law to do. So the list of menu items ultimately ends with council. So if there's any off-menu items or anything related to anything that would otherwise be deemed administrative by us or has to be reviewed by the planning commission, it's before you tonight, so you're the highest level of review. And this is one of the requests that they've made. So in essence, they've met the obligations of not only state law, but our local regulations.
Someone had mentioned in one of the comments, public comments, that it's the same height as the first street project. Does that sound right? Just, I don't know how high that one is.
You know, I I apologize. I know I worked on that project when I first got here, another marathon meeting. But I I don't recall the overall height, but we could say that one is, that one is six to seven story, I believe. Yeah, so I think it's actually maybe a floor taller because it's to the top of the habitable space. I think it's actually one, one floor higher than this one.
Okay.
Sure.
Someone also had asked in the, all of the documentation for this project, that there was no mention of horses or horse accommodations or horse community. Can you speak to why there's no horses mentioned in the, in all of the documentation? I haven't read every single word, so I don't know if that's true, but that was the claim. And if you could speak to it, that'd be great.
Under SB thirty five, we're limited to the objective standards, objective zoning, objective design review standards. And so if it's not an objective standard, then we can't really address it. But I will say, as we've mentioned, there is a dedicated, they're dedicating thirty seven feet for the, for the widening, which will allow for a future bridle path to be constructed in, you know, in the future time. But that, if it's not an objective standard, we can't require it.
Okay, and speaking of that widening, so a couple of questions about that, piggybacking on what Councilmember Mullins asked earlier. So since the widening is planned to be done after the project itself is completed, because that's an improvement, right? That street is really narrow. So when the construction is happening, how will the trucks get in and out of that project site without widening the street?
That's Scott Planback Planning Manager. The applicant will need to work with the city on a construction management plan on getting in and out of the site. As mentioned by Mr. Ramirez earlier, we work with the applicants on how to get into the site, where the construction workers will park. So there will be a plan in place before construction starts. So that's something we'll. So that's something we'll look at during the building permit process.
Okay, and based on your knowledge of that area, that plan is possible?
The plan, to get in and out of the site, yes, we'll have to work with them on that to get in and out of the site. I mean, that's something we have to work with them on. Yes, and it may be analyzed by staff and transportation staff.
Okay. And then that also, that section is only part of the section that has a thin street? There's also a section towards Riverside that's also thin. If that portion is widened, will the rest of it be widened too?
The applicant's only responsible for their frontage. So they're only going to widen their frontage. So the frontage to the north of it will not be widened.
That is a major concern. Okay. Is there any, okay, wow. But that can't, that, that part that's closer to Riverside, that cannot be considered for the SB 35 consideration?
That would fail next, that would, it would fail not nexus, it would fail proportionality. It's only proportional to require the portion immediately adjacent to their site.
Okay. That, yeah, that sucks. Okay. Just a couple more questions, Vice Mayor. So the moratorium that we just extended last meeting, does it apply to this project?
The moratorium that was expanded, no, it does not apply to this project because this project was submitted before the SB 423 moratorium was in place. So they submitted in December of 2023, and the moratorium went into place in January 2024.
Okay. And then, so kind of an extension of that question then, because, what was the, what was the bill again? It was called 423?
SB 423.
SB 423. So SB 423 provided, you know, we had an option to create the moratorium and make temporarily an exception for equestrian. So the SB 35 we're looking at, though, we can't make an exception for equestrian communities?
No, we cannot.
Okay, those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Takahashi. And thank you again, staff, for the report. I'm going to start with some questions generated by the emails and communications we received and the tour that was graciously provided by Ms. Radley. I won't repeat anything that my colleagues have asked. And thank you for asking some of the very important questions that I'm sure you all had as, as we received the communication. My first question is, we received concerns about this creating an obstruction of emergency routes. Does it, in your assessment, create an obstruction of emergency routes for emergency vehicles? And would that affect the project's status under SB 35?
Well, we did work with the applicant to ensure that there was going to be safe fire access. So on the northern portion of the site, there is a 26-foot-wide fire lane, which ends in a hammerhead turnaround. So that will provide safe turning movements for any, any emergency vehicles. That was a very extensive discussion that was actually the cause for much of the delay between the formal submission and the resubmission. And the applicant met with staff numerous times to address that particular concern. So, but that has been addressed with the fire lane, which you can see on the site plan.
Thank you. And then, bear with me, because I know this question is being asked in different forms, but one of our emails mentions that some ecological concerns regarding the developer's biologist's report and an opinion from Daniel Cooper, a senior conservation biologist who has studied the area extensively. They mentioned letters sent to the city on December 2022 and July 2023, identifying the project site as a habitat for sensitive species based on soil, vegetation, and microclimate data. Based on this information, does this violate any of the criteria for a project approval under SB 35?
Well, as you mentioned, this was received in 2022 and 2023. And so we actually flagged again, like I mentioned before, we flagged this item. And that was one of the reasons why we provided the applicant with an incomplete letter. And since then, they submitted for, they submitted a biologist's report, which has been peer reviewed again, an independent peer review by the, hired from a consultant hired by the city to address that concern.
And that biologist's report does not identify the project as a sensitive habitat?
It does not. That's correct.
Finally, on this leg, we received some emails stating concerns that this project generally failed to meet several SB 35 requirements. Can you speak to the project as a whole? Is there anything in this report or in any of the public hearing documents that would construe a clear failure of the project to meet SB 35 requirements?
No. There's, there's nothing in, we did our review and we feel it meets the objective standards. It's consistent with objective standards.
Thank you. And then my, the rest of my questions are about our decision-making process and what we're actually being asked to do tonight. And Councilwoman Takahashi, I know you started that line of questioning. And we described ministerial design review, what it is, and, and really our incredibly limited role here. Can you define what objective standards are in this process?
Sure, so objective standards are standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark available and knowable by both the applicant or development proponent and the public official prior to submittal. And includes only such standards as are published and adopted by ordinance or resolution by a local jurisdiction before submission of a development application. And we have a whole section in our, in our zoning code that provides these definitions on what ministerial approval is, objective standards, and so on.
And I see that you included as well, thank you, the objective standards considered in this project and the reasons where the applicant met each standard. And I believe that starts on page six of the report. Following that line of questioning, according to state law, according to SB 35, can we consider outside evidence, like the one presented today, from our community? Can we consider that evidence to be part of the objective standards? Is that an objective standard?
No.
Thank you. Thank you. And then my final question is, and this goes to, to any of the staff or, or city attorney staff who would like to respond. Under the Housing Accountability Act, I know we have to find a code-compliant project, and it may not be denied or reduced in density unless the city council makes findings. What do we have to, what is, what is the phrasing under that act that we have to find? What does the city have to find?
You, in order to deny the project under the Housing Accountability Act, you would have to make written findings based upon a preponderance of the evidence in the record that the housing development project would have a specific adverse impact on public health or safety, which constitutes a significant quantifiable...
Excuse me, I can't hear her. Please.
Which constitutes a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective identified written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions as they existed on the date the application was deemed complete, and there are no feasible methods to mitigate or avoid such adverse impacts.
So I'll ask you again a more direct question. Under the Housing Accountability Act, would, I know we had a lot of folks present different issues about horses, safety, a lot of what my colleagues asked, the emergency vehicles, the, the tree, right? A lot of this was submitted and a lot of this, to me, would be considered specific adverse impact to the health or public safety. Is that considered under the Housing Accountability Act? Can I consider what was submitted or no?
You, so I want to clarify your question earlier, Vice Mayor, regarding whether or not you can consider the evidence presented during today's public hearing. All of the evidence becomes part of the record of this hearing. You cannot impose anything that's not an adopted objective standard that was adopted at the time that the NOI, the Notice of Intent to submit an application was submitted, so back on December 26, 2023. So to the extent that, that there is evidence suggesting a public, adverse impact on public health or safety, you, you may consider that. But under the Housing Accountability Act, there has to be no feasible method or way to mitigate or avoid that impact. So if you can come up with a feasible way to mitigate it, then under the Housing Accountability Act, you likely cannot make that finding. And I will say that, again, the objective standards that we impose are intended to mitigate as much of that risk as we can. However, as you've heard during tonight's meeting, as well as other meetings, we are in the process of updating objective development standards. And so this is a conversation that is ongoing, and these are considerations that the council, you know, will need to make as we update the city's adopted objective development standards.
And, and what I would add is, so I have no doubts that horses are sensitive to noise and construction activity. However, we've been having this discussion in the Rancho for several years, and I have yet to see a published public health safety standard, a measurable, quantifiable standard. So the burden, the, the standard that you're held to is not whether someone could be scared or that there's a possibility for a car accident. It has to be specific, quantifiable. It has to relate to a public health safety standard. It's not, is there a conceivable impact? It's really something very specific.
Councilwoman Takahashi?
I have a follow-up question to that. So when we're considering the, also the potential negative impacts, can we consider the impacts of the construction? Or does it have to be the impacts of the project itself once it's completed?
Well, so for instance, under construction, we have our ordinances. We require haul routes. So all of the hauling contractors have to go to the city. They have to meet with Public Works. Public Works has a list of published haul routes, and they have to stick to those routes. We have construction hours. You cannot construct on Sunday, and I think only between the hours of seven and, seven and eight and...
Six, seven, six.
Something like that. So no late-night hours. They have to ask, for instance, if they have a special service that they have to schedule relating to shoring or excavation, and it has to be outside those hours, they have to request permission. That's in our ordinance. So we have standards, they have to relate to the project, they have to relate to specific impacts of the project. And, and so if there are things that are kind of attenuated and community-based, and the council wishes to do them, to staff's earlier point, we can talk about those, but they may be on the city's dime.
Okay, but thank you for that. Also, I guess I want to rephrase my question, that when we're considering the SB 35, that it's approvable under SB 35, can we consider the construction impacts? Or is it only the impacts, not the, not the local construction ordinances we have, but when we're just looking at SB 35 checklist?
I think Mr. Ramirez might have an answer for you.
Well, I want to refer you back to, Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director in Planning. I want to refer you back to the general plan. When we did the general plan update in 2013, 2035, we had to do our own EIR, Environmental Impact Report. And included as part of that, we analyzed noise for construction activity. And it was determined that construction activity was a normal occurrence in, in land use areas within the city when construction activity occurs. So in other words, it was already analyzed and looked at as permissible activity that occurs as part of construction. So, so it's not, it was not flagged as adverse impact. It was identified as part of noise that occurs during those hours designated for noise construction activity occurring in the zoning code. And it's in conformance with the general plan.
Councilwoman Mullins?
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can you give us an example what safety and health would mean under SB 35? Because everyone looks at safety and health pertaining to their situation versus what perhaps the actual meaning of SB 35, when they put it together, what is safety and health?
So one kind of easily-to-understand example would be if we clearly indicated that the sewage facilities were not adequately sized, and the prediction of the development would be that it would cause sanitary sewer overflows, which are both hazardous to the environment, they violate our permits. We could not allow that. It would be a challenge. But that would be something where everything about it is quantifiable, both the volume of the waste, the strength of the waste, the fact that it would contaminate waters this close to the river. We could identify several aspects of that impact that would violate many public health safety standards.
Okay. Any other questions, colleagues? Councilwoman Anthony?
Can I ask the developer a couple of questions?
Yep, you're very well on your right to.
Hello, sir. This is your third iteration of this. I wanted to ask, the notice of intent on this version, it says here we got it on December 26, 2023. But then almost six months later, the city staff said it was incomplete. There was a lot of stuff missing. You've since completed it and gone through the checklist and all that stuff. I wanted to ask, December 26, were you working on Christmas? Were you?
Well, I can say that just because the application was submitted on December 26 doesn't mean that it didn't take months of work to put together.
Okay. Is there any reason that you didn't take it?
His, is irrelevant?
Oh, sure, sure. I'm not talking of motive here. I'm just talking about timeline. You originally put in an application for office space, and then, and then it became housing. You came up and you testified that it wouldn't meet the review qualifications, or you, you said the original project couldn't get passed. Did you meet with city council members during that time? Or did you, or was it mostly with, with Rancho neighbors?
We met with many people in the broader community. We met with community leaders in the city of Burbank. We presented our project. We made presentations. We had Zoom meetings, coffee meetings, and we did have presentations to sitting council members at the time. Not all of them, but a large majority of them were informed of our project application and details.
All right. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Anthony, I also want to note for the record that any of those presentations do not seem to have included or one-on-one meetings included anybody in this body because I didn't hear any disclosures of that nature at the beginning.
The question that you asked was about the original project, right? So it's not relevant in this hearing?
Right, it was not relevant. But I don't think anybody here was on council at the time, if I remember correctly. And I did not meet, so, yeah. That's all. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mullins?
I, there is, I'm aware of a new law that is going to take effect January, I believe, 2025 for penalties in the event this project doesn't go through. Are we allowed to speak to what these penalties will be or what would happen if this project doesn't go through?
Well, the, the amendment to the planning and zoning law provides that, under the Housing Accountability Act, well, not that actual section, but it, it says that a wrongly denied project subjects the agency to a penalty from the date of denial of $10,000 per month until the project is approved, up to $50,000 a month until the project is approved, as determined by the judge. And it does not give the judge... And it does not give the judge discretion about the penalty. It must as to the amount, but it says shall impose. So the stakes are high to make a correct decision, because the legislature continues to up the penalties. There's a different provision under the Housing Accountability Act, which provides that if the city were to wrongly deny a project subject to Housing Accountability Act protection, and the judge issues an order to correct that decision, that there's a penalty per unit of $10,000 per unit, up to $50,000 per unit, $50,000 per unit, if the denial is determined to be bad faith. And so if the city doesn't comply with the judge's order within 60 days of the order, so that would be all the way to trial, judge's order, and the city still doesn't comply after the order, that would be $10,000 per unit, up to $50,000 a unit if it's determined to be bad faith. It doesn't say 50, it says five times the $10,000 penalty. This new amendment puts a penalty in place, not after the order, and give it, it's immediate from the date of the denial until the correction. So it's just clear evidence that the state is doing everything they can to encourage and penalize local governments to follow the state housing law, and to the point of 65913.4N, make every interpretation in favor of the production of housing.
Thank you. So even though, and I know you can't speak on behalf of the state, but my point is, even though a lot of our legislators understand the impact on local government and on neighborhoods and community, the community from SB 35, they still continue to implement additional strict rules on local government, which means it puts us even in a difficult situation to look at projects like this and, and consider denying it, consider adjusting it, or consider anything else besides just implementing the project, which really, I mean, I know there is a lot of legislators that have heard from us, and, and they've heard from members of the community, but it seems to me that they're on the, on that path of forcing local government to just comply with housing rules and build more housing. So there's no questions about it.
That's correct, and it's exceedingly difficult.
Thank you, Councilor Mullins, for pointing that out. Very true. Alrighty, do I have any other questions? No. Seeing none, I will now declare the public hearing closed, and the council will now deliberate. What is the council's pleasure?
Councilmember Anthony?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Councilmember Takahashi alluded to this, and we'll probably get into it a little bit more. Obviously, this is a very difficult night, we're here till 10:30. It is not an easy process, it's not a very clear process. Some folks reached out to me and asked me to deny the project. We're not here to approve or deny the project. We're here to go through a checklist and either agree or disagree with what our staff has determined is checking these boxes. Now, the boxes are not very big. There's very limited things that we can check off. The state has seen to that. SB 35 was very clear in limiting the scope of the kinds of boxes we can check. There was a new law that came into effect, 423, we talked a little bit about it, at the beginning of this year, January 1st, 2024. But this new iteration, the third version of this project, came into effect and was submitted five days prior to that law taking place. It was signed over the summer, but typically what the governor does when he signs laws is says, all right, it takes effect January 1st. On occasion, it'll be July 1st of the next year. Very rarely does he sign something that takes effect immediately. And so if you look back at all three of these projects, you'll see a very, you know, robust and detailed plan on the very original office space. And then the second version came along, and it was an SB 35 housing project, it was 23 units. It wasn't as fleshed out, because SB 35 doesn't require you to do all of that upfront. Like I said, it's very limited checkboxes. And then you look at this third version, and it is much less than what we've seen. It seems hurried, it seems rushed, and I can't be for certain, but my guess is, they tried to get this through before January 1st. If something was submitted after January 1st, SB 35 would not apply, because equestrian districts were exempted in 423. They were exempted because our state senators and our subcommittee member signed a bill that this council advocated for, long conversations with Senator Portantino, Senator Menjivar, Senate Member Friedman, to get exemptions for equestrian neighborhoods. And in fact, it was, I believe Senator Menjivar's amendment that was, was brought forth and actually moved through to get that equestrian exemption. There were long conversations in this council with our elected representatives. There weren't many other conversations happening up and down the state, and yet we were able to push so hard to get that law passed. In that same timeframe, this council has been very pro-housing. So not only did we fight to protect areas in the Rancho, but we are also a very pro-housing council. And holding both of those facts as true in your mind is not a difficult thing, once you dig down into the work that we've done. This council, four people you see up here and one absent, we're the council that has brought forth a Rancho-specific plan. That's something we're moving forward on. So the work that we're doing is very important to this specific neighborhood that we are talking about today. Unfortunately, we are faced with a very limited scope of determination, not approval, but determination, that the approval was correct or not. And under those limits, the state has taken away a lot of discretion, subjective review in favor of objective review. Very simply put, the very base zoning laws, the general master plan, the FAR, the amount of units per acre, all of that very base stuff, SB 35 tears everything else away and digs right down into the bottom and says, this is what you can approve, basically by right. I talked about by right earlier with some of the commercial development. At that point, if they come through, if the developer walks in, and they can scribble it on the back of a napkin and go, look, these are all the things that we meet in the requirements, let's move forward. And like I talked to earlier about it, there's no shot clock on fixing it. Only, once it's finalized, then there's a 60-day shot clock to push it through as fast as possible. And that's why there's such a long determination factor made, to make sure all of their ducks are in a row. Because as soon as it's submitted for final approval, these people have to stay up all night. The fact that we don't have a council meeting until December 10th, which is a week after the deadline, means that they had to bring this today, a couple weeks ahead of time. So they were on an even shorter shot clock. That's why we're getting last-minute amendments. We had like three different amendments today, redlined and all this stuff. So this has been a very difficult law for us to deal with. Not just us, this is up and down the state. Go to any, any city council, they're talking about SB 35. I'm grateful that, as of the 1st of this year, we are now exempt in the equestrians, so we're not going to see any more of this. But that comes as little comfort to having to deal with this today. There are options available. You, as a private citizen, you have your rights, you can do whatever you want after tonight, but today, we have a duty to meet the requirements of a state law that has been imposed upon us, because there were a number of factors leading up to this that prior city councils did not act on. And that's fine, most other city councils didn't, because they thought something like SB 35 was unimaginable. But we have been working fast and diligently, and even now, there's a couple of things that we're behind on, at the state level, for us to integrate into our city code, but we are trying to adapt to all these new housing bills. But at the end of the day, all of the potentially ambiguous stuff, we must lean towards housing. That is what the state compels us to do. And when I say compel, I mean they have a lot of enforcement at their hands. The state of California has a lot of power, and money, and lawyers. So when I say compel, I really mean compel. And they force us to lean a certain way. I wish we could walk a tightrope, but they don't. They're pushing us in one direction. They are, they just are. You can talk to any city council up and down the state. And so for me, I don't know if the developer is going to be able to follow through with all of this stuff. That's not up to us. That's up to him to meet all of the criteria after the fact. Because this just, today, is a determination of whether he's met the base criteria to move forward with SB 35. The developer has a long way to go to get this project approved. Doesn't have permits yet, he doesn't have any of the stuff we talked about, about the mitigation and the, where he's going to haul, like, none of that has been determined. That's on him, so. I'm okay for now, I'd like to hear from my colleagues.
Who would like to go next?
Okay. So I have some very serious concerns about this project. I'm concerned about the street widening issue, it doesn't make sense. And I'm also concerned about the safety of the bridge with the subterranean parking excavation. I'm concerned about the construction time, which a lot of us have talked about with the sounds and the trucks and blocking streets and blocking access to the bridge. I'm concerned about the traffic. While, generally speaking, residential doesn't increase traffic as much as business does, it still will increase the number of local use in that street. So it's important to me that we keep that street safe, especially that blind corner. I'm concerned about the height of this project and its style. And so that, that's just a short list of the concerns I have. And I, I really want to say that I appreciate all the work that you have done in the community to really turn over every single possible rock to look for something that would be a way to have measurable, specific reasons why not to approve the project. But SB 35, as my fellow council member said, is incredibly clear. And it's incredibly clear that they don't want city council involved in these decisions, that we are not part of the ministerial review process. If it checks all the boxes, it's just like getting a permit, I mean, it's very complicated, but it's like getting a permit online for something. If you check your boxes, you get it. And that's at the state level. And not only is SB 35 like that, but the density bonus law is like that, too. And that's how we got the five-story building. And we are in a position where unless there is clear, obvious, measurable reasons, then the state will be inclined to use maximum penalties to get us to build this project. It's reminiscent of Pickwick. We've been through this before, once, and it's a similar, probably even more intense and worse, situation. And I still, though, even with that, I'm still concerned about the project. So as, looking forward, I, it's really important to me that whatever happens tonight, that we make sure that whatever happens, that we are keeping the neighborhood safe through, the best we can. I know, I agree. And, yeah. And I know. So, again, SB 35 and density bonus says, council, you don't have a role in this. And when you do, you have to lean towards housing, as, as we've mentioned. So we are, we really, this may seem like we're rubber stamping, in a way, we are. And a lot of it has to do with the new law that was in 2024, taking us out of this, out of this process. And I looked with you under every single rock, and I think a lot of us did, we looked under every rock to find what we could. So, and it sucks. It really sucks, so, just, those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Takahashi, sentiments are shared. Councilor Mullins?
Thank you. I, I, you know, talking about technical approach in SB 35, I want to talk about something a little bit different, acknowledging the SB 35, acknowledging what you both said. I want to talk about the community, your feelings, your, your studies, your copies that you made for all of us, the emails that we received. I want to acknowledge all of you. I want you to know that I probably learned everything I need to learn about Equestrian Center, about bridges, about Habitat, about the real detail of SB 35 from all of you, from your emails, from your phone calls. And it, it really, and I know, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I know this, that it pains us that we are not able to give you what you want, like we did last week. We gave you last week something that we knew we were in control of, and we were able to extend AB 423. It's, it's very difficult to continue seeing the state pushing more laws onto us that we cannot control what they do in our city. We cannot make our community, we cannot make our constituents pleased with the work that we do. It is not something that we are taking pleasure of sitting here. I, I see your tears, I, I, I see you, I feel every one of you. We've been dealing with this for many years. As the city clerk, I sat here and watched what happened to Pickwick Project, and I saw what the previous council did, and I saw how the public came and beat up on them because they spent public funds fighting in court for something that they were going to lose. I became aware of the law that will be taking place in January of the penalties. So 10,000 up to five times, $50,000 per unit, starting the day you deny the project, that can cost the city millions of dollars, depending on when we go through the hearing. And it is, and it's a very difficult decision, because I don't want to sit here and pretend that this is not affecting you, I don't live very far from all of you. And yes, I would be concerned if I, if I was in the same community right next door to you, but there's nothing, there's nothing we can do unless we continue talking to Sacramento and can. and continue talking to our senators, continue talking to our representatives to be able to extend the law of AB 423 even further than July of 2025. I don't want to have to sit through a process like this again and tell you that it's okay for them to do what they're doing to your community. It's all our community. I love the rancher. We go down and we walk around. I've been, I've been to a lot of the homes and I've seen how beautiful they are. So it's not just your area, this is my area as well, even though I don't live down the street from the project. I want you to know that we will continue the fight. We will continue reaching out to our representative. I know the city manager is working on a letter that will be signed by all the council members. We will continue to push our legislators to make sure that our communities are protected. We don't get to pick and choose which area we're going to build. We've, we hear it from other areas. We don't want it here in our backyard. We don't want it in our areas. We don't have a choice. And my biggest fear is really not SB 35, it's AB 2011. AB 2011 is really my biggest fear of someone deciding on a corner lot at a commercial site where they can build, put a building in there with no parking requirement. So there is a lot of laws that obviously have been pushed on us until we meet our 8,000, well, the council set 12,000 unit goal, but we are required to put 8,000 units. And how are we going to meet those requirements? We talk about that we need to create more housing condominiums for sale. This offers that, that's why the project looks attractive, and it's under SB 35. And you know, if I had a magic wand and I say, go away and go to a different location and we'll find that location, I would do it. Because I don't want to see you unhappy. I want to make sure that you walk away from here feeling at least your council heard you. But I don't know what law I can, I can wave my magic wand under. Thank you. And, and, and we, I think there were so many documents, so many emails, that we were trying to look for that needle in the haystack to say, aha, this is the needle we can't, we heard today from staff, we heard from the city attorney. And, and believe me, I know some of you have said, and with all due respect to staff and the city attorney, don't think that we did not challenge them in questions in our meetings. Don't think that questions, tough questions were not asked, not only here tonight, but also in our pre-meetings with the staff. We were trying to get answers to every question that was sent to us. We were trying. And, and you see the amendments, you see the changes, you see the PowerPoint presentations. We took what you sent us. And I know personally, I dissected the heck out of those emails and underlined and asked those questions. But you heard the answers tonight. It was in behind closed doors. The answer said, no, under SB 35, you cannot hold them, you cannot deny the project. And if any of you, and I've spoken to some of you, and I said, I beg you, give me something that I can deny it with. Give me something that I could say to staff, aha, here's what's wrong, we can't do it. Every question was answered, and you can all challenge it. If you didn't like the answer, you can still, you know, talk about it, but they were answered. The questions where SB 35 is straightforward, we cannot deny it. If we deny, we have penalties. I'm sorry, I can't take dialogues right now, but I appreciate it. Maybe we can talk later. So I, I, I just wanted to acknowledge that I hear you, I see you. I, I, I want to protect the community, and we're going to continue working hard on it. I also wrote down, similar to what Councilmember Takahashi said, traffic mitigation is important, the sound blanket, the bridge engineering. These are issues that I will be requesting at the end of this, at the end of this item before, when we request for agenda items, that we need to bring some of these items. We need to check the bridge, we need maybe to look at the sound, sound blanket, and also the traffic mitigation. We want to give you some protection as well. And we need to have staff bring this back and see what the cost is going to be. And let's discuss it, and let's see if the city can incur some of these costs. So we will continue working to protect you as much as we can for what we have in control. So with that, I pass it over to you and don't know what else to say on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Mullins. Any other thoughts from my colleagues? Councilmember Anthony?
I just wanted to mention one quick thing. You know, I was here and I voted no on an SB 35 project previously. And it's getting built. Because the no vote was not to deny the project. That, that, that doesn't exist. There's no, you don't vote to deny the project. The no vote that we took was, oh, we don't agree with the findings. Then we went to court, and the findings were found. And it gets built. So there is no stopping certain things when the state says you can't stop it. So, you know, I've been through it. I voted no, and it's getting built, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. And thank you to my colleagues for sharing your thoughts. I know this is not an easy vote, and this is not an easy thing to deliberate or thing to make a decision on. And so ma'am, I'm so sorry, we cannot take any more opinions from the public. I hear your frustration, but we can't have a back and forth conversation right now. So we really can't have a back and forth, I'm sorry. And so, and so, and so, folks, I really don't want to have to invoke the state law that allows me to stop the meeting process and, and, and the deliberation. So please let us get through this. This is never an easy decision to make. In fact, I, I can barely call it a decision, as former Mayor Gabe Bloody so eloquently pointed out in her letter.
So if we can't preserve decorum, the meeting will continue, but without the public. So we would like you to remain. But Vice Mayor has already read the rule, and we would like to keep you here in the room. But if we can't maintain decorum, we can empty the room and continue the meeting.
And I don't want it to have to get there, folks. So I'll, I'll be brief. Former Mayor Gabe Bloody eloquently pointed out in her letter to us that, as she was in these shoes, that she understands that the SB 35 process leaves little to no ability to consider anything outside the staff report and objective standards, and does not allow council members to exercise their own judgments. So it feels very faulty, feels very awful to be here, quite frankly, when there, this is not even a decision that we are making. We are just agreeing with something that we were made to agree with. And I, look, it's no secret, I've shared with many of you that I am personally not a fan of this project for many of the reasons you pointed out, many of the reasons my colleagues pointed out. And these reasons are considered subjective under the state law. My concerns are subjective, your concerns are subjective under the state law. And we have to go by these objective standards that are the checklist that my colleague pointed to today. With SB 423, and thanks to our state senator Caroline Menjivar, we now have considerations for future projects in the Equestrian District in place. Unfortunately, this application came to us before. We have done, as my colleague mentioned, as much as we can to protect you all from the impacts of development. And unfortunately, while it looks like we have a decision to make here tonight, the only real decision in front of us truly is not approve or don't approve the project. That's not our decision. What we are deciding on right now is do we vote on something in the way that the state requires us by law to do? Do we take a protest vote and open ourselves to litigation in a way a council before us has already done, in opening ourselves to millions of dollars in litigation, mismanagement of taxpayer dollars? And unfortunately, if our goal is to stop this project or change it in any way, that is simply not a vote we can really take. And so we have to make sure that we are protecting the best interest of the city. And I will place an emphasis that this council has worked, will continue to work with our state legislators, will continue to work with folks like Liz Radley, who is doing everything she possibly can to work on other parts of the rancher that need work, on the things that we can do something about. Thank you for that. And we will continue to work with you all in good faith in that. This is just simply a decision we do not have a choice over. And believe us, it is frustrating when we get the emails from you all asking us to do something we know is not in our power to do. We wish it was. When I may take a vote and a person in our community doesn't disagree with, or disagrees with me, I have no problem sitting down and having a proper discussion with them as to why I took that vote based on my values. This is not one of those votes. This does not ask what I think as a legislator. This takes my power away as a legislator and all of our power up here. And so I hope you can appreciate the difficult decision that we are making tonight. But I'll end on a positive note in saying that we have legislators that care in Sacramento. Our state senator has already began the, begun the process for this. Caroline Menjivar is your state senator, and she is the one who put forward SB 423. Nick Schultz is your state assembly member-elect. And he knows exactly what it is like to be in this seat, making this tough decision. And so I hope you can turn to them and, and consider them partners, consider us partners in the advocacy moving forward. And it's not lost on me that although we are approving this project tonight to the developer, it's not lost on me that this feels extremely retaliatory. And with that, I will end my, my thoughts on this and just ask, does anybody have a motion? Councilmember Anthony?
I move that the city adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Burbank confirming the community development director's determination that project number 24-0002257, a 40-unit multifamily residential project located at 910 South Mariposa Street, is consistent with all applicable objective zoning, subdivision, and design review standards, and approving the project's streamlined ministerial design review and vesting tentative track map, 84060.
Do I have a second?
Can you make me do it? Okay, I second.
Thank you, motion by Anthony, second by Mullins. Madam City Clerk, let's take the roll. Councilmember Anthony?
To the developer, please Google the phrase sunk cost fallacy before you move forward. Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Extremely reluctant, yes.
And Vice Mayor Perez?
All right, motion passes 4-0. It is also 11 o'clock, so now I must confer with the city manager.
Yes, Vice Mayor, what I would recommend is take a five-minute break. We have two fairly short, straightforward reports. Come back, and I think we could finish those within a reasonable time.
Okay, the last thing I will say, if folks are here for the next report, we're going to take a five-minute recess, so some of us can use the restroom. Feel free to do the same, but stick around if you're here for the next report. We'll make it quick, and thank you for sticking around with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, everybody. Welcome back after, back to our regularly scheduled programming. We have two reports to counsel this evening. After staff's presentations, the city council will proceed to in-person public comment only. Speakers will be allowed to speak on the item at the conclusion of the presentation as long as the speaker has not spoken on the item during the first period of general public comment. Please be sure to submit your public comment card now as no additional public comment cards will be accepted once the comment period commences following staff's presentation. All right, the first report to counsel tonight is the appointment to fill two vacancies on the Burbank's Cultural Arts Commission for unexpired terms. I welcome Madam City Clerk Kimberly Clark to present the report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Perez. Good evening, members of the council, Kimberly Clark, City Clerk. Tonight I will be presenting item number 10. On October 1st, 2024, the city clerk's office began advertising and accepting applications for one vacancy on the commission for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2025. This vacancy was created by the resignation of Commissioner Mercedes Molina. Subsequently, on October 16th, 2024, the city clerk's office began advertising and accepting applications for a second vacancy on the commission for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2027. This vacancy was created by the resignation of Commissioner Annette Abnew. To obtain qualified candidates, a notice of vacancy was advertised through the following channels: the city's website, city council meeting announcements, all of the social media platforms managed by the city clerk's office, through press releases sent to the Los Angeles Times, The Burbank Leader, and my Burbank.com, through notices posted on the city hall bulletin board, using community groups and organizations, and through constant contact email notifications. The initial deadline to submit applications to the city clerk's office for the commission was Wednesday, October 30th, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. Following the opening of the second vacancy, the deadline was extended to Monday, November 18th, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. The city clerk's office received 15 applications. And I'm going to read them in the order in which they were received. Patrica Darbo, Kyle Bound, Rebecca Tottman, John Buckingham, John Butterworth, Bryant Galindo, Mary Lou Gilliland, Mercedes Cooper, Thomas Awesome, Erin Fitzgerald, Paula Rhodes, and Matthew Arat, who is a non-resident, James Fletcher, Marjani El Ghanedi, and Katrina Darwich. Please note that applicant Matthew Arat, who I mentioned is not a resident of the city of Burbank, will only be able to be considered for the vacancy ending July 31st, 2027, as this vacancy is either for a resident or a non-resident. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Before any questions, we're going to go to the public comment. We have two speakers on this item. Our first speaker, and because we have two speakers only, you get your full three minutes. So our first speaker is Ms. Cynthia Pease. I love that. We rarely clap before people come forward, so that's a first.
Her reputation precedes her, that's what it is.
You have three minutes.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Perez, city council members and staff. First of all, thank you for all you do. Bless you all. Do you all know what the mural is behind you? Some of you may. Oh, you do? Okay, then I won't, I won't waste my three minutes. Arts bring the community together. God knows we need it. In advocating, first of all, the Arts Commission has come a long way, and thank you. I mean, the city has made this happen, city staff, the Department of Parks and Rec, fabulous. And so we've, we're coming now, we have the grants. What I, what I do want to say about this is, first of all, I was surprised about 15 applicants. I was like really ecstatic. Here's the thing, what was, no longer is. We're rebuilding or relooking at how the next generation of Burbank residents, and I'm going to say Burbank because we're trying to build the audience here and our venues here. And then when I say what what no lo, what was no longer, it is, it's a new world. We have to recreate the footprint, the cultural arts footprint for the city of Burbank, and that's with the next generation. So we have 15 applicants. I mean, first, you know, normally I go, no, please nominate this one or this one. No, I'm not going to say that tonight. I don't know if you've had time to really look at those 15 applications. I do need, I do honestly believe that we need some young ideas in there, you know, to know what's going on. I mean, I'm getting to the point of retirement, as you may know, but we really need to, so I'm hoping, I'm not going to personally recommend any one person, but it is a new generation, so when you've looked at that and who you've considered, seriously, and you've got, and half the battle is showing up. All right, so you got a group here that withstood the night. God bless you all. All right, so anyway, thank you, that's all I wanted to say about it. And of course, you know, whatever we can do to make it better, we're going to make this, we're going to put this on the map between the Olympics and the Starlight Bowl and the, and the new Georges A. Park plans. And if you need help getting money, just call me and I will be in Cusamano's face and Ganji's face in three seconds, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Mercedes Cooper.
Hello. I know it's been a long evening. I'm going to start with a fun fact about me. I have a bachelor's degree in economics, and if I had not detoured on the path of film production and got accepted into grad school, I probably wouldn't, would have pursued public planning, so I really am in awe of the depth of tonight's discussion. But I'm here for the commission and the vacancy, and my name is Mercedes Cooper. I've been a resident of Burbank for three and a half years, first-time homeowner. When I purchased a condo in 2021, I am currently the senior vice president of public programming for a nonprofit media and arts collective near Echo Park. And daily I curate film series and conversations completely free for the public. I'm really invested in making sure that arts and culture remains a part of our society, is accessible for all, and that everyone gets to see themselves in the communities in which they live. It's very, very important to me. When I'm not working, I am at a play, I am at a dance something, I am at a museum, I am at an art gallery. I'm also the product of, I grew up in San Marino County, so I'm the product of youth theater, and I just think it's really, really important that we keep the work going. And as I, and because I love arts and culture so much and just can't get enough of it, I submitted to be part of this commission for consideration. And as I think about planning routes in Burbank for the long term, it's just really important to me that I am becoming more aware of all the things that are happening in our community, which is wonderful, and I like to continue to add to the work that has been put forth by the commission and all of the initiatives and activities that are going into this community. So I just thank you for your time and for the long evening and for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, let's move forward. Does anybody have any questions?
All right, we have a comment.
Quickly, a comment before we start. As always, it's such a joy to see when we have this many applicants for a position, to see that enthusiasm for it. At the same time, it's also difficult because we want to pick everybody. And there's so many qualified candidates tonight, as we often have. So just wanted to encourage folks, if anybody doesn't get, well, there are going to be at least people that don't get picked. If you don't get picked tonight, please continue to participate in the arts and community. Come to the Arts Commission meeting, there's lots of ways to be involved, and when another opening comes up, please apply again.
Councilmember Mullins?
I want to add to that and also say thank you for staying here so late. And Cindy asks a special thanks to you, and I see you got your group already picked around you. I think if only the camera would show you along with all the candidates here. They gravitated to you, so. Oh, here you go, you're on TV now, look at you. Thank you, TV land. Yes, continue, if you, it is very tough, as Councilmember Takahashi said, 15 applicants, two positions, we're going up and down the list, so voting has nothing to do with your qualification, it just, it's voting. So continue to apply if you don't get appointed tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Anthony, I believe you have a question.
Yes. Madam City Clerk, is it possible for us to take the longer expired term first and then the shorter expired term vote after?
I don't see any reason why not. Any objections? Okay, then we will be starting with the 2027.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the 2027 term can be a resident or non-resident?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, which is why we have the extra name there. All right, I will read each name and then by a show of hands vote. Patrica Darbo, Kyle Bound, Rebecca Tottman, John Buckingham, John Butterworth, Bryant Galindo, Mary Lou Gilliland, Mercedes Cooper, Thomas Awesome, Erin Fitzgerald, Paula Rhodes, Matthew Arat, James Fletcher, Marjani El Ghanedi, and Katrina Darwich. So we have a tie there, two votes each. Madam City Attorney, and maybe I will consult with the, Madam City Clerk, and I'll maybe consult with the City Attorney as well. It's late. I meant Ms. Kimberly Clark and Mr. Joe McDougal. Is it possible for counsel to make a decision on who we'd like to appoint? Because it seems like we.
Are we allowed to deliberate?
Yes, are we allowed to deliberate? Okay, great. Colleagues, I would like to propose that we clearly appoint one of these people for one of these seats and the other person for the other one, because clearly, you know, I, I'm very happy with the choice both of you made. I would like to think you two are happy with the choice we made, so maybe we just pick somebody for the terms.
I'd like to offer, Mr. Fletcher has been involved with the city for a very long time. I'd like to offer him the the longer term. Not saying that Ms. Cooper, I mean, she's new to the city, but I'm sure she can get her bearings. I would like to give her the the shorter term, and she can come back and get reappointed if she likes it and if she does a good job. I'd like to see her come back at the end of the year. So I'd like to offer Mr. Fletcher first.
I would agree with that personally, Councilmember Anthony, and I can give my insight into why I voted for Mr. Fletcher. I think he has a wonderful resume, much like many of our other applicants, but I was particularly interested in his investment and experience in the entertainment industry and in involving our media and entertainment industry in the arts that we do locally. I think that's really important. So, yeah.
I'm, sorry, I'm absolutely fine with that. I think it's a first step. And I tell you, nothing is guaranteed, but what ends up happening when you appoint to short term, you come back to us again, and the odds are really good after that. So I think it's, it's a good move.
Just don't miss a bunch.
Yeah, and I think that's a good, you pointed out, yeah. Councilmember Anthony, you pointed out, I think it was you who pointed out that, you know, James has been in the community for 13 years, really knows Burbank, and the kind of probably seen the evolution of the arts too. But I'm really, I'm really excited about Mercedes, your background in economics, because the cultural arts now is under our tourism for, it's relatively new, so having someone with that also angle, I think, is exciting as well.
So just a final proposal, I guess?
Yes, I guess I construe that in a motion to to appoint James Fletcher to the unexpired term ending in July 1st, 2027, and Mercedes Cooper for the unexpired term ending in July 31st, 2025.
And that would be a 4-0 vote for each one of them.
We can take a vote?
So noted.
All right.
All right, great. Congratulations to those of you who are appointed.
Congratulations.
And thank you for spending your evening with us. We hope you get plenty of rest, and if you are not appointed, please continue to stay engaged. We would love to meet with you and hear about your interest in the art community. We want to keep you around, and you clearly have your new friend group right there.
Yes, and I'm the liaison for the Arts, the Cultural Arts Commission, so I look forward to seeing the new commissioners at the next meeting and hopefully the rest of you as well, to see what's going on in the arts.
Thank you all. Alrighty. The second report to counsel tonight is the consideration of the Infrastructure Oversight Board recommendation to not excuse the absences of board member, of a board member. Madam City Clerk, Kimberly Clark, please present the report.
Thank you, good evening again. Kimberly Clark, City Clerk, tonight I'm presenting item 11. Board member Shont Codeverdian was originally appointed to the Infrastructure Oversight Board, IOB, by council on January 24th, 2023, to serve an unexpired term ending on July 31st, 2025. Member Codeverdian then missed three regularly scheduled meetings. Section 2-1-403 of the Burbank Municipal Code addresses board member absences. I won't read it to you in its entirety, but I do have the passage to hand if anyone has questions. The IOB met with member Codeverdian, who indicated that he would be able to attend future meetings, and the council subsequently voted to excuse those absences. While the members' previous absences and dark meetings do not count against him for the current attendance review, member Codeverdian subsequently missed the June 27th, 2024, and September 24th, 2024, meetings, again placing him in violation of the attendance policy. Member Codeverdian has thus failed to attend at least 75% of the regularly scheduled meetings during the previous 2023-2024 12-month period. The staff report that you have contains a table detailing the members' attendance during the past 12 months. On October 24th, 2024, the IOB reviewed the additional, excuse me, the additional absences of member Codeverdian and voted to recommend that the council not excuse them. Member Codeverdian did not attend this meeting. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. City Clerk. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Anthony?
Yes, so the board member did not attend the very hearing where he was, the very meeting where they were talking about his absences?
He had a different engagement that night, a charity event.
All right.
Councilmember Mullins?
I don't see a letter.
I don't see a letter from the member asking us to excuse his attendance or even provide reasons why. Was there not interest to submit a letter to us?
There was an email submitted to the chair, and it was long, and it was talking about how he has a lot of work commitments, he's an attorney, and that he felt like, to paraphrase, that he wasn't holding anything up because they still had a quorum, and I believe that he indicated he would not resign, and he just would accept whatever decision was made. He did not attend the meeting where it was discussed.
Okay.
Could I just clarify? That email was sent to the chair of the IOB?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Do we, do we not have a copy of that?
No, you, yeah, no.
Is there any correspondence or communication from the board member in question that came to council?
And typically, from just previous history of knowing the individual right either show up before council or write a letter explaining, ask him for an excuse, and it really concerns me that the three absences, and on top of it, the meeting where he was, they were going to talk about his absence, he wasn't even present to even provide an explanation or apologies to what happened. And I understand, just in general, yeah, there's a quorum, but there's also responsibilities that applies to individuals that we appoints to boards, commissions, and committees, they have to, there is an attendance policy, they have to attend, because it does put an impact on the overall decision, and the IOB is one of our important boards that perhaps he's not engaged in the discussion, that decision is made and he has to be caught up on all the issues they discussed. So I'm personally in favor of, unfortunately, situation to remove the member, and perhaps in the future, he can look and apply for another position when he becomes available or his time is allowing him.
Councilwoman Takahashi?
Yeah, and just to confirm, we've already once made a decision on this member's attendance, right? Right, we went ahead and gave him an excused absences, so those are not counted in this next round, right? Yeah, you know, as a previous member of the IOB, it is really important, to your point, Councilmember Mullins, to stay on top of the process, especially through the budgeting season. So we do need members who will be there consistently, and from what I understand based on the report is that his work is very busy, so it doesn't look like it's going to let up.
Councilwoman Anthony?
Yeah, I got 13 names of people who are willing to serve, so if it's okay, I'll move, I'll move right now to not excuse the absences of Board Member Sean Codiverdian. If it, and just real quick, before I get a second, if it's simply us, we don't excuse it, that automatically goes into default, is that correct, Mr. City Attorney? He has removed, or do we have to remove?
Still need to make a decision to remove him.
Okay, so, in addition to that move to not excuse, I will also add that we immediately remove Board Member Sean Codiverdian from the Infrastructure Oversight Board.
I will second that motion, and just to share my thoughts, I wholeheartedly agree with my colleagues. Look, we all who decide to serve the city in different capacities, be it on this body or on boards and commissions, which most of us up here have done, we know to show up on time, to be present and to be a part of the discussion, and we know that many community members would like to participate. If Mr. Codiverdian cannot do that at this time, we totally understand, wish him well in his job, and congratulate him on that, but we do want folks who are invested in participating, so look forward to finding folks who are invested in participating. All right, let's take a vote.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries 4-0. Alrighty, that completes our reports to council. Now we will go to council comments. We will hear council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments, attendance at conferences, regional meetings, and community events. Who would like to begin? Councilwoman Takahashi?
All right, I only have a few things. So Thursday morning, I attended the Valley Economics Alliance Board Meeting, and then also later in that morning, I attended a briefing from the Cal Cities about the updates in California legislation and budget, and this was a briefing that was given to the new chairs and vice chairs of the different commissions, so it was in the scope of the different commissions, committees, sorry. And then on Friday, I went to the Holiday in the Park, and I walked up from my house, so that was fun, I didn't have to park like everybody else. Did you not park either? Yeah, so we walked up, and we were like, the whole time we're walking up, we're like, thank goodness, we don't have to drive. But you can park, for those of you who are watching, if you're looking for a place to park next year, you can park down by our house, there's plenty of parking, about four block, four-block walk. And I was able to, it was pretty fun, I was able to stop by the My Burbank booth and do a little podcast interview while I was there. Yeah, it was fun. And then we ate too much from the food trucks and resisted some of the sales, but some of them we didn't resist. And then at the Holiday in the Park, one of the vendors was the LA Kings, which we know they own the ice rink, and they offered us some two-for-ones. And then on Saturday, we went to a Kings game, and so, and we won. So even though Kings is not in Burbank, the game is not in Burbank, we have the Kings in Burbank, so it's related, I think it counts.
They're a part of our Burbank family. All right, who would like to go next? Councilmember Anthony?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. So I attended the Holiday in the Park, it was very fun. I was working, I was a volunteer for Troop 201, we were selling chili, and it was amazing chili. We also had a bake sale, so that was great, and it was packed. I have never, I've never seen Holiday in the Park so packed. I attended the Downtown Burbank Winter Wine Walk, that was fun, street fair, they closed down San Fernando, and it was amazing. Very cool, very cool. And then yesterday, it's not on my sheet, because it was just last second, yesterday I went to a production that was filming at the Burbank Tennis Center. Yeah, Ben Stiller's production company, Red Hour Films, was doing a movie starring Jake Johnson and directed by Burbank's own Josh Greenbaum, and they shot for almost 10 days on the Burbank Tennis Center, and I got down there, I was able to talk with the director and some of the stars, and thank Mr. Stiller for shooting in Burbank and bringing production back to, back home, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. Yes, let's keep production in Burbank. And now, I'm going to go, so you could never say I didn't pick on you and I didn't let you go last. So on Thursday, November 21, along with Councilwoman Takahashi, we attended the Valley Economic Alliance Board of Directors Meeting, great discussions, and excited for what's to come, the alliance with the new Board of Directors and an installation down the road. And then on Friday, November 22, along with all of my colleagues, I attended the Holiday in the Park, also was on the My Burbank Podcast, and just want to give a great shout out to the business owners who come together to put this event on. I know it's not easy, I know you do a lot of the labor yourselves, I watched you do it at the beginning of the day, and thank you for all you do, because you not only create opportunities for our community to get out, to enjoy being in community, and to really enjoy the holiday spirit, but also opportunities for the businesses that we may not notice to get noticed. It was great to meet a lot of new business owners and have a lot of storefronts showcased. I think I heard in the crowd many times, oh, I've never been here, haven't seen this. That's what we want to change. So thank you, thank you to everybody who organizes from the bottom of my heart. And now, Councilmember Mullins?
All right, so I attended on Wednesday, November 20, the Chamber Mixer at the Coast Annabelle Hotel, and I heard during the mixer that the name is going to be changed to Coast Burbank Hotel, so that, stay tuned, I think it's coming up. Very, very well attended, lots of businesses, gave, he gave tours of the hotel and their banquet halls, so great place if you guys want to go there and have breakfast or lunch. Also, attended the grand opening of the Palma Restaurant, right on Palm. Great turnout, it was really nice, beautiful place, so again, it's somewhere where I'd like to go and visit and maybe support the business. Holiday in the Park, I did walk myself from Florence and Clark all the way there, because yes, there was no parking. And I also had our two grandkids with us in the stroller as I walked and pushed them all the way there. And unlike you, I didn't do a podcast, I was at the tables where they had games for children, because I was on grandma duty with my daughter, and so we had so much fun with the kids. Kudos to the people, the committee that put on the event. I have never seen so many people on Magnolia as I did this year. It was incredible. And moving on to the Downtown Burbank Winter Wine Walk, oh my God, that was incredible as well. Great turnout, fun event, it was like a huge party on the street type of event, so it was very, very well attended. So it was a fun week, fun weekend, and lots of good things, and thank God it didn't rain, because I was really concerned about that, but it worked out.
No, the weather saved that for today. Alrighty, now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do members of the council have any items to introduce? Councilmember Mullins?
I'm like, I'm eager to do this. So going back to our discussion earlier, and I would like to, Steve, staff can bring a report in regards to the rancher area of addressing traffic mitigation, the sound blanket, the bridge, whether, the engineering of the bridge, whether it withstand the construction. So I don't know if it can all come together, addressing the rancher, or we have to bring them in separate steps?
So if you phrase it as information regarding feasible construction mitigation, that could come. A question about the engineering feasibility of protecting the bridge is a much-
Detail.
It's a bigger, it's a bigger ask. I think any impacts are remote, personally, but it's a good question. I don't think a structural investigation, well, anyway, anyway, without-
It's not on the agenda, so we can't really go into it.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to have to stop you right there.
It's okay, Mr. City, but I do-
We do one meeting without Nick, and you're all over the place.
I do appreciate the, no, thank you for that information. So I think staff knows what we're looking for based on the discussion we had earlier, so if we can bring some information back in regards to the whole project with those three areas, thank you.
How the tables turn.
It's not even that late.
All right, any other agenda items? Councilwoman Takahashi?
Okay, so, let's see. So we've now, two meetings have people talking about the parking permitting system, so would love to get an agendized, just a report out, note and file, but gives us an opportunity to ask questions on the parking permit, and hopefully before or very early on in implementation, so we can get feedback. Also, I think we already agendized or put on the request for agendized to the topic of the low fence on the Equestrian Trail, but it would be great to get a memo of where that's at. And then also, speaking of railings, because that was the theme tonight, on Olive and Magnolia, we've been talking about those railings for a long time, if we can get a memo. I know that Ken gave an update briefly, but if we can get a more expanded memo on the status of those two railings, it was being talked about when I was on the IOB, so it would be good to get an update. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Seeing none, and having none myself, we now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, December 10, 2024, for a joint meeting in the council chamber, 275 East Olive Avenue, second floor. Thank you, have a lovely Thanksgiving with your family and loved ones, and have a wonderful night, Burbank.
Happy Thanksgiving.